Report which harmonizes the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 2982 and House Bill Number 11358 upon its ratification by the body. But just additional information, we just cleaned up the bill, Mr. President. We deleted some redundancy in the bill, Mr. President. So, thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, there is a motion here for the approval and ratification of the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2982 and House Bill 11358, and let the text of the explanation be dim, spread into the records of this chamber. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2982 and House Bill Number 11358 is hereby approved and ratified. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2821 and House Bill Number 6571 on the Accelerated and Reform Right-of-Way Act. With that, I move to recognize the Chairperson of the Senate Panel, Senator Mark Villar, to give highlights of the Conference Committee Report. And so move, Mr. President.
Consideration of the Conference Committee Report is hereby, is now in order, and the Honorable Sponsor and Chairman of the Sponsoring Committee, Senator Villar, is recognized. You may proceed, sir.
Mr. President, dear colleagues, good afternoon to all of you. I rise to manifest my support for Senate Resolution Number 1376. Oh, wait. Sorry, sorry. Sorry. Mr. President, again, take two. Mr. President, my dear colleagues and guests of Senate, good afternoon to all of you. I would like to express my full gratitude to my dear colleagues for supporting the passage of this measure. I would like to also give thanks and kudos to the agency's resource persons, Senate Secretariat, and Senatorial staff who offered their time, knowledge, and expertise. Mr. President, personal ko po naranasan ang mga problema sa right-of-way acquisition bilang dating secretary ng Department of Public Works and Highways. It was a recurring problem for infra projects which eventually caused delays in its accomplishment, resulting in economic costs to the government. During my tenure, we had to issue multiple department orders to facilitate efficient processes of right-of-way acquisitions for various high-impact infrastructure projects. Our fellow Filipinos are also affected with these issues as we failed to deliver infrastructure projects timely, projects that could have been utilized for the efficiency of their day-to-day lives. Marami pong projects ang hindi natapos sa target day dahil sa hindi ma-resolba na delays sa right-of-way. Moreover, compensation issues with private property owners also occur during the inefficient right-of-way process. Given these issues, we are glad to have the current Right-of-Way Act amended. ARO introduced important changes to the current law in order to make it responsive to the dynamic changes in the infrastructure landscape. It will expedite the process of right-of-way acquisition and provide just compensation to private property owners, thereby striking a balance between the implementing agencies and the property owners. Before I end, I would like to thank our dear colleagues who contributed to the crafting of this bill, our Senate President, Chice Escudero, who actively lobbied for the bill, and Senator Bong Revilla for his co-sponsorship of ARO. I would also like to thank our counterpart from the House of Representatives, led by Congressman Romeo Momo Jr., for their support and contribution to this bill. Mr. President, after having met and fully discussed the matter in a conference with the permission of the body, I move that the joint explanatory statement of the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 2821 and House Bill Number 6571 be read in toto into the record and the bicameral Conference Committee Report be ratified. Thank you very much.
President, there is a motion here coming from Senator Villar as to Senate Bill Number 2821 and House Bill Number 6571. Mr. President.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2821 and House Bill Number 6571 is hereby approved and ratified. Congratulations to the authors. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, out of respect to our dear colleague from Las Pinas, Mr. President, we are in receipt of a third reading copy of House Bill Number 11421, entitled "An Act Strengthening the Protection of the Las Pinas Paranyake Wetland Park, Including the Establishment of Its Buffer Zone and Appropriating Funds Therefore." In accordance with the communication from the Senate Chairperson, the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change, I move to adopt House Bill Number 11421 as an amendment to Senate Bill Number 1536, entitled "An Act Strengthening the Protection of the Las Pinas Paranyake Wetland Park, Including the Establishment of Its Buffer Zone and Appropriating Funds Therefore." I so move, Mr. President.
There is a motion to adopt House Bill Number 11421 as an amendment to Senate Bill Number 1536. Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. House Bill Number 11421 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unless the Honorable Senator Sincha Villar would like to make a... Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we have received a communication from the House of Representatives that House Bill Number 11539, entitled "An Act Amending Republic Act Number 10591," is amended, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Firearms and Ammunition Regulation Act, was passed on third reading yesterday, June 10, 2025. Given that the aforementioned House Bill is identical to Senate Bill Number 2895, which was approved by the Senate on third reading last January 27, 2025, and with the consent of the body, I move that the Secretaryate be instructed to move forward with the enrollment of the subject measure. I so move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Secretary is directed to comply with the same. Majority Leader.
Mr. President.
Congratulations to Senator Zubiri. And Senator Batoh de la Rosa. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes of House Bill Number 10535, entitled "An Act Amending Sections 134 and 168 of Republic Act Number 8424," otherwise known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, is amended. With that, I move to recognize Senator Sherwin Gachalyan, the Chairman of the Senate Panel, to give the highlights of the Conference Committee Report. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. Senator Gachalyan is recognized to sponsor the bicameral Conference Committee Report. You may proceed, sir.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, as the lead confris of the Senate Panel, I have the honor of submitting for ratification a copy of the bicameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Committee Report Number 581 and House Bill Number 10535, which amends Sections 134 and 168 of the National Internal Revenue Code. The Senate and the House Panels have met and thoroughly deliberated to reconcile our respective versions of the bill. Through this measure, we address two longstanding gaps in the tax treatment of regulatory process for denatured ethyl alcohol, gaps that have placed an unnecessary burden on the manufacturers and led to underutilization of valuable industrial alcohol. Under existing law, imported ethyl alcohol, even if intended for industrial use, cannot be denatured in the country and is therefore subject to excise tax. This has discouraged importers and compounded supply chain inefficiencies. This bill removes that restriction. Once imported ethyl alcohol is denatured in the Philippines, it will be treated the same way as its locally-produced counterpart, exempted from excise tax. Sa madaling salita, nagkakaroon na ng patas na pagtrato ang lokal at imported na ethyl alcohol basta't ididenature dito sa bansa. This bill also authorizes compounders with rectifying facilities, not just domestic distillers, to perform the denaturing process. These compounders often deal with off-spec or surplus alcohol. By giving them the authority to denature, we prevent waste and allow them to transform these materials into usable products, such as disinfectants, personal care items, and industrial goods that promote health, hygiene, and productivity. Mr. President, this bill supports critical sectors by reducing production costs and expanding access to industrial alcohol, all while preserving government oversight over its processing and taxation. Safeguards are firmly in place. The denaturing process shall be done in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Bureau of Internal Revenue, including approved denaturant formulations. The BIR will also require confirmatory testing prior to removal of the denatured alcohol and will assign representatives to monitor the actual denaturing process. To my fellow confris, Senate Minority Leader Kokopamentel, Senator Nancy Binay, Senator Pia Kaitano, and Senator J. Vercito, thank you for your invaluable contributions during the pre-bicameral and bicameral conference meeting as we resolved several issues. I also thank Senate Minority Leader Kokopamentel for his invaluable insights during the period of interpolation. Mr. President, the comprehensive details of the disagreeing provision are reflected in the joint explanatory statement. With the permission of the body, I move that the joint explanatory statement on the disagreeing provisions on Senate Committee Report 581 and House Bill Number 10535 be read in toto into the record and the bicameral Conference Committee Report be ratified. Thank you, Mr. President, esteemed colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Gachalyan. Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is hereby approved. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 10535 is hereby approved and ratified. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2826 and House Bill Number 8937. These are the bills on the Enhanced Fiscal Regime for Large-Scale Metallic Mining. With that, I move to recognize Senator Joseph Victor Hertzito, the Chairman of the Senate Panel, to give the highlights of the Conference Committee Report. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Senator Hertzito is recognized. You may proceed, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, esteemed colleagues in the Senate. I have the honor of submitting for ratification the bicameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2826 and House Bill Number 8937 or the Enhanced Fiscal Regime for Large-Scale Metallic Mining Act. The Senate Panel is composed of this humble representation: Senate President Chice Escudero, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Alan Peter Kaitano, and Senator Aquilino Kokopamentel III. Mr. President, as the Chairperson of the Senate Panel, allow me to report the provisions of the present reconciled bill accompanying our Conference Committee Report. The committee adopted the Senate version of the bill as the working draft. Under the reconciled version, the confris agreed to levy a 5% royalty based on gross output of mines operating within the mineral reservation in a five-year royalty rates ranging from 1% to 5% based on margin from metallic mining operations for those outside mineral reservations. We also wish to highlight the new concept of windfall profit tax, which is additional tax whenever the margins hit 30% to allow the government to capture a larger share of profits when metal prices are high and mining companies earn more income. There is also a provision that restricts thin capitalization by setting a maximum debt-to-equity ratio for the tax deductibility of interest expense. The reconciled bill also strengthened the mechanism for transparency and accountability in the extractive industry. Finally, for our local government units, we included a provision for the immediate release of LGU share of excise tax royalties and other taxes and fees. With these reforms, Mr. President, we are optimistic that this will contribute an additional 6 billion worth of revenues for the government. Ginong pangulo, kinikilala natin ang potensyal na mining industry na makatulong na palawigin ang ating ekonomiya. Tiniyak nating balansihin ang makarapatan at interes ng ibat pang sektor ng lipunan. Naiskulama pong bigandin ang probisyon na tingin ko ay nakatulong sana sa pagtaguyod ng mga trabaho at pagyayabong ng industriya sa ating bansa. The Senate version approved the provision of a five-year moratorium on exports of locally-extracted minerals. This proposal would have served as the framework to revitalize local industry, stimulate economic growth, create higher-quality employment opportunities, promote value-added processing, expand our domestic and supplier network, and develop robust chains and enhance linkages across sectors, among others. The provision may not have been adopted by bicameral conference committee, but this may be something for future Congresses to visit. Mr. President, medyo nalungkot po ako. Sa tingin ko, ito'y magiging game changer sana sa atipong mining industry. Pero hindi pa ho tayo nagtatapos. Ilalaban pa ho natin ito sa mga susunod na Kongreso. To the end, this representation would like to thank this August Chamber for extending their valuable support for the passage of this measure from the committee hearings to our plenary deliberations. Mr. President, with the permission of the body, I move that the joint explanatory statement on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 2826 and House Bill Number 8937 be read in toto into the record and that the bicameral Conference Committee Report be ratified.
Before I give the motion of Senator Hertzito, Chair would like to recognize Senator Zubiri. What is the pleasure of the Honorable Zubiri?
Thank you, Senator President. May I just ask the sponsor if we can just clarify the provision of the initial law that we passed here in the Senate, if it was carried, which was the export ban of rare-earth minerals?
The Chair can answer. That was removed from the version of the bill.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to find that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Zubiri. Senator Villanueva.
Yes, Mr. President. May I just manifest, Mr. President, shortly, in reaction to the report given by our head contingent of the Senate?
The gentleman may proceed.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, let me put into the records that this representation strongly register its opposition to the deletion of the five-year ban on mining that was included, Mr. President, in the third reading version of this bill. Mr. President, I feel that its removal shifts our policy from precaution to profit and puts our fragile ecosystems at risk. Mr. President, we work hard for this very important landmark legislation headed by Senator J. V. Hertzito. I remember interpolating him and debating with him on how we can improve this measure. Mr. President, yes, we are rich in copper. Yes, we are rich in nickel and cobalt, key minerals for clean energy, but if we keep exporting raw ore through direct shipping, we gain little and lose much. Mr. President, Indonesia already banned nickel exports to encourage local processing, and we feel, I think, the entire Senate feels that we should do the same. Nakakalungkot ginong pangulo, parang sinasabi na doon sa kabilang bahay, ang number one kailangan proteksyonan muna, 'yung mga mining companies nila, hindi 'yung taong bayan at ang sambeyan ng Pilipino na nakangailangan ng trabaho. Mr. President, in the 18th Congress, we have filed this bill to maximize the benefits from mineral resources, and we will refile it next Congress and move to restore this ban. Gayan ang sabi ng ating Chairperson na nangunan ang ating bicam conference, tuloy pa rin ang laban natin para sa makatao at makakalikasang pagmimina. Maraming salamat, ginong pangulo.
Thank you, Senator Villanueva. Majority Leader, what is the pleasure of the Honorable Antiveros?
May I explain my no vote, Mr. President?
The lady may proceed to the bicameral Conference Committee Report.
Yes, Mr. President.
We have not yet acted on the motion. You can make a manifestation in lieu of an explanation of vote in relation to the pending motion. The lady may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good sponsor, Mr. President. Bago po ako buboto, nagpapasalamat ako na tinanggap ang panukalakong pagbabago sa seksyon ukol sa transparency and accountability. Malaking bagay, gumisasabatas ito sa kabila ng makailang ulit na kabiguhan, magkaroon ng Freedom of Information Law sa ating bansa. Nagpapasalamat din ako na kasama sa mga datos na isasa publiko ang mga magiging epekto ng pagmimina sa ating mga natural capital na tinatakda ng RA 11995 o Pencaslaw. Kayo pa man, ikinalulungkot ko na hindi naisama ang dalawa kong rekommendason. Una, ang pagdagdag sa royalty na nauukol sa mga katutubo kapalit ng pahintulot nila na magmina sa lupang ninuno o ancestral domain. Isinulong ko na gawing sahig o floor ang 2%, subalit ginawang ceiling o bubong ito para sa mga makukuha na mga katutubong nagmamayari sa lupang ninuno. Tinatayang 790 million pesos ang royalty natanggap na mga katutubo noong 2023. Isang porsyento lamang ito sa halaga ng mineral na nilalabas sa kanilang mga ancestral domain. Maliit na halaga na, nababawasan pa dahil binubuisan ng gobyerno ng income tax ang royalties na tinatanggap na mga katutubo. Pangalawa, ang panukalang export tax. Tinutulak ko ito hindi lamang sa karagdagang buis, subalit dahil sa kinakailangang pananalapi upang mapondoan ang isang national industrialization program na aking sinusulong sa Alternative Minerals Management Bill. At pangatlo, totoong meron na kukuhang royalty ang Mines and Geosciences Bureau, ngunit ito'y limitado lamang sa mga mineral reservations. Binababaan pa mula sa 5% at ngayon 3% na lamang sa bicam version. Malaking bahagi nitoy masasabing reimbursement o bayad lamang para sa nagastos na ng pamahalan sa pagtuklas na mga mineral. Sa mga kadahilanang ito, Mr. President, and good sponsor, ikanululungkot ko na buboto akong no sa mining fiscal tax regime bill. Salamat, Mr. President.
Noted and entered into the records, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are in receipt.
We have not yet acted on the motion.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Mr. President, there is a move here to ratify the disagreeing provisions, the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of the Mining Act, and let the text of the joint explanation be dim spread into the records of the chamber. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2826 and House Bill Number 8937 is hereby approved and ratified. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2899 and House Bill Number 9293, the Bills on the Landmark Philippine Nuclear Energy Safety Act. With that, I move to recognize the Chairman of the Senate Panel, Senator Alan Peter Kaitano, to give us the highlights of the Conference Committee Report. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Senator Kaitano is recognized. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, Mr. President, salamat sa Panginoon, pangalawa po sa lahat ng ating mga colleagues. Special mention po kay Senator Wynn, Senator Pia dun sa mga areas na tungkol sa energy sa Philatom. Special mention po kay Senator Risa Antivero, Senator Lauren Legarda, the minority leader when it comes to protecting the environment, safety, security. Having said that, Mr. President, malinaw ang objective ng bill na ito ihiwalay ang ahensya na nagpro-promote ng atomic at nuclear energy at ang ahensya na magre-regulate. And when I say atomic energy, this includes for medical purposes, agriculture, et cetera. Having said that, Mr. President, let me take this opportunity in behalf of the whole Committee on Science Technology to thank first and foremost our Majority Leader, who was supposed to chair that committee but allowed me to take over, to thank Senator Mig Zubiri for the Enhanced Philippine Science High School Act, thank Senator Pia for the virology, creating that very important aspect, taking note of that very important aspect that we neglected before the pandemic. And may I also thank the House of Representatives and everyone here. Yung e-governance law, yung konektadong Pinoy, together with Philatom, I feel with the virology in the Philippines High School will be game changers in the years to come. So may I ask, Mr. President, that yung joint explanation be part of the record, and I hope that the implementations of this act will give honor to the hard work of the different authors and technical... Let me also thank every, the consultants who gave us the technical and scientific knowledge to pass all of these laws. Thank you, Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank again Senator Alan Peter Kaitano for the passage of the Philippine Nuclear Energy Act and for accepting our proposal to have the notion of modular nuclear plants, Mr. President. Mr. President, mamaya po, I...
We have not yet acted on the motion.
Mr. President, Senator Alan Peter Kaitano likewise intimated to me that Congressman Mark Kuhanco really did the spade work for this. Ang tagal po niyang pinagtrabahuhan ito, at araw-araw kinukulit po ako, hindi ko na naintindihan. So, we acknowledge likewise the work done by Congressman Mark Kuhanco. Mr. President, I move that we approve and ratify the Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 2899 and House Bill 9293, and let the text of the joint explanation be dim spread into the records of the chamber. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2899 and House Bill Number 9293 is hereby approved and ratified. Congratulations to the authors. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, before we proceed with the short manifestation of Senator J. V. Hertzito as well as the privileged speech of Senator Pia Kaitano, later on, Mr. President, I will be sponsoring a resolution extolling the leadership of our good Senate President. Subalit ang magbabasa na puno, I see Senator J. D. Hertzito. So allow me to state for the record that with Senator Hertzito reading the sponsorship speech, this does not in any way diminish the deep respect and high regard I hold for the distinguished gentleman at the helm of this chamber. As the ancients would say, virtus in arduus, virtue shines in times of difficulty. Truly, the Senate President has led us with both steadiness and strength through such times. Mamaya po, yung speech ko si Senator J. V. na ang magbabasa. Pinatikim ko lang po kayo noon, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we recognize Senator J. V. Hertzito for a short manifestation.
Thank you nevertheless, Majority Leader. The Honorable Hertzito is recognized. You may proceed, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, dear colleagues. This is just a short manifestation. It has come to our attention that there was an approved motion from our counterparts from the House of Representatives withdrawing from their adoption of Senate Bill Number 2838 as amendment to House Bill Number 6557. This is the magna carta for barangay health workers. For the record, Mr. President, and for the information of all our beloved BHWs, we would like to express our sadness and disappointment with this current development. All along, we were expecting that this bill, which aims to acknowledge and recognize the hard work and dedication of our unsung heroes, was just at the doorstep sa malakanyang waiting to be signed into law. Sa kasamaang palad po sa pagbawi... Sa kasamaang palat po sa pagbawi na makasamaan natin mula sa House of Representatives ng kanilang acceptance ng Senate version. Ito ay mistulang hakbang paatras para sa tuluyang pagsasabatas ng panukalang nating ito. Mr. President, matagal na pong inaantay ito ng ating barangay health workers whom I consider one of the most overworked yet undercompensated. Sila po ang ating talagang frontliners at nakita natin ang kanilapung dedikasyon, ang kanilapung serbisyo, lalo na nung panahon ng pandemya. Umulan man o umaraw, kinakagat pa ng aso at inahabol pa. Ang ating BHWs ay nandyan para magtrabaho upang pangalagaan ang ating kalusugan. To all our BHWs, our frontliners during the pandemic, our force multipliers for the implementation of the universal healthcare. Your Senate has always been aware, sensitive, and concerned of your struggles. We remain firm in believing that the Magna Carta for BHWs should be passed into law to just recompensate your service to our people. Sa bahagi po ng Senado, ginawa po namin ang aming tungkulin. Ngunit makakaso po kayo na patuloy kami nakasupota sa lahat ng ating barangay health workers. Maghihintay kami sa susunod na mga hakbang na maaring gawin ng House of Representatives para umusad ang panukalang ito na handog natin sa ating mga bayaning BHWs. Maraming salamat po, ginawa Pangulo.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Zubiri?
Mr. President, I would just like to second the manifestation of Senator J.B. Ersito.
The gentleman may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, I am disheartened, I'm saddened by the idea that the House of Representatives withdrew their support of such an important measure for our BHWs, barangay health workers. At least, we put it on record that the Senate stood up to the challenge in helping our BHWs. We did our best, Mr. President. You did your best, we did our best. And it's just unfortunate that they had to withdraw the adoption of the measure, which will put the nail on the coffin of this measure for the 19th Congress. So we just like to put that on record, including not to mention our minimum wage bill, Mr. President, that you and I have been fighting for from the very beginning. They continuously insist on the 200 peso minimum wage. We all know that the businessmen, the small and medium enterprises cannot afford such a large sum and they insist on that amount when we are 100 pesos a day per minimum wage earner increase. So that puts us in a bind and now it does not move forward. It is the last day today before we adjourn on synergy. We'd like to inform all the workers, laborers, minimum wage earners, that the Senate did its best to fight for the rights and of course, the fiscal incentive of having another 100 pesos a day minimum wage increase in their salary. Naawa po ako sa kanila, again, I'm also disheartened with the fact that they don't want to negotiate with us. Obviously, if we adopt the 200 peso minimum wage bill, mavi-veto ni Presidente Yan. Definitely, that will be vetoed. And if that will be vetoed, we torpedo the measure and it looks bad on everyone. So, Mr. President, I just want to put that on record, that the Senate has stood up and fought for these sectors. Unfortunately, our friends in the House have not been very accommodating on this issue. So I just want to give my, I just want to let vent out my sadness on these particular two topics. And I thank the Senate President and our colleagues for fighting side by side with us in pushing for these social justice measures. Maraming salamat po, Mr. President.
May I know the status of the bill?
As member of the BICAM, the sponsors here, I believe that they don't want to discuss anything unless we adopt the 200 pesos per day, which we all know the businessmen cannot afford.
Please.
Mr. President, just to report out to the body, Mr. President, if you recall, we passed this measure more than a year ago and that we were able to get the official third reading measure passed by the House of Representatives less than 48 hours before we will actually adjourn. And yesterday, Mr. President, we have talked to some members of the conference. And in fact, last night, together with the Senate President, they were saying that they are amendable to the Senate version, to adopting the Senate version. And so we thought that it's going to happen, but unfortunately, even this morning, I got some calls from the members of the media asking me to react on the letter sent by this representation yesterday morning appealing that our version be adopted. But today, apparently, there was a letter circulating and I would say, I have to say that this is not an official letter because I have not received any letter from the Chairperson of the Senate, I mean, House of Reps Committee on Labor Chairperson that they will continue to push for their own version. However, Mr. President, a lot of labor groups, including the Wage Boards, et cetera, are calling our counterparts in the House to adopt the Senate version, which they all support. So let me just put that on record. Hope springs eternal, we still have time. If they would adopt today the version of the Senate, then we would be very happy to report it out to our workers who deserve nothing but more, Mr. President, when it comes to getting their salaries. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you Senator Joel for enlightening this august chamber with regard to the legislated wage act. Senator Pia Caetano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would simply like to join the, our colleague Senator J.B. Ersito in his manifestation regarding his dismay and disappointment on the what transpired and what the fate of the barangay health work, Magna Carta for barangay health workers bill is. That's all.
Thank you. The manifestation of Senator Pia Caetano is hereby noted. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, likewise, this representation associates himself with the disgust expressed by the Honorable Zubiri relative to the BHW law as well as the minimum wage law increase. The last legislated wage act was more than three decades, Mr. President. So napaka-sakit po sa mga umaasa na mga manggagawa natin sa barangay, lalong-lalo na yung mga nagtrabaho nga nung COVID-19 at sa ating mga manggagawa ngayon na hindi natupad ang kanilang mga pangarap.
The manifestation of the majority leader is hereby noted.
Mr. President, the Honorable Senator Pia Caetano would like to deliver a privileged speech. I move that she be recognized.
Senator Pia Caetano is recognized. The avail of the privilege hour.
Mr. President, I rise today on a matter of personal and collective privilege. June is National No Smoking Month under Presidential Proclamation Number 183 and May 31 was World No Tobacco Day. In light of this and the ongoing global and national efforts to curb tobacco and vape use, the following report is all the more timely and warranted. As Chairperson of the Senate Committee on Accountability of Public Officers and Investigations, known as the Blue Ribbon Committee, I will be submitting my chairman's report and its executive summary is here, which I have personally distributed to the members of this body regarding the inquiry in aid of legislation on the privileged speech of this representation entitled "For the Fifth Time, the Philippine Gets the Dirty Ashtray Award" on February 14, 2024. This report includes an inquiry into the Philippine delegation's conduct during the Conference of the Parties, the COP10 negotiations, which drew criticism for delaying the proceedings, echoing tobacco industry arguments, and failing to uphold the country's commitments to global health standards. In 2005, the Philippines signed and ratified the World Health Organization Framework Convention on Tobacco Control. This is the WHO FCTC. During the WFCTC COP10 held from 5 to 10 February 2024 in Panama City, the Republic of Panama, the Philippines received a Dirty Ashtray Award. The Dirty Ashtray Award, a notorious dishonor, was conferred upon the Philippines for the brazen use of tobacco industry tactics to dispute and delay consensus. It was reported among others that the Philippines sent a 34-person delegation to COP10, the largest from any government. This unusually large number remarkably outnumbered the delegation of some more populous countries such as China and Russia. After conducting several hearings, I now present our key findings and recommendations. First, the Philippine delegation received the notorious Dirty Ashtray Award at the WFCT Conference for actions seen as favoring the tobacco industry by, among others, delaying the agenda and pushing the so-called balanced policy narrative. In reality, the balanced policy has been weaponized to serve industry interest, geysed as concern for farmers in direct conflict with our obligations under our current law and the WHO FCTC. Second, the Department of Trade and Industry appears to have exceeded its authority when it issued the DTI vape law supplemental rules, which effectively delayed the implementation of key provisions of the vape law. We recommend further investigation to determine whether this constitutes a usurpation of legislative powers. Third, the vape industry was directed to register their products and remove non-compliant products from the market. The period to comply was continuously extended by the DTI by granting the vape industry undue leeway through this extended market clearing period. From 5 June 2024 to 7 September 2024, the DTI may have committed corrupt practices under the Anti-Graff and Corrupt Practices Act. We therefore recommend the filing of appropriate charges against the responsible officials. Fourth, we raise concerns over the Philippine delegation to COP10, which may be considered a misuse of public funds. We recommend that the Commission on Audit conduct a special audit of all expenses, whether public or private, related to this trip. Fifth, the committee affirms the need to re-establish DOH leadership in future FCTC negotiations. Sixth, the DOH should lead- Sorry, sixth, we raise serious constitutional concerns with the vape law itself. It may violate the principle of pacta sunt servanda, our duty to honor international commitments. The committee recommends urgent amendments to RA 11900, return regulatory authority over vapes and HTPs to the FDA, raise the minimum age of access from 18 to 21, and strengthen the provision on restriction of flavors to plain tobacco and menthol only. Finally, it must be emphasized that this hearing took place at a time when tragically the first documented death from e-cigarette or vape-associated lung injury, evali, was recorded in the Philippines. This case mirrors global evidence, including a 2019 U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention report of over 2,800 evali hospitalizations and 68 deaths. We cannot ignore that the first related death in the Philippines, that this is a sobering reminder of what happens when regulation and public health protection fail. And this may not be the only case. Others could remain hidden due to weak surveillance and lack of accountability. Dear colleagues, this is how the tobacco industry operates. They prioritize profit over public health. The industry is slimy. They repeatedly use delaying tactics and exploited regulatory loopholes to advance its interests at the expense of public health. The previous Congress undermined progress made on tobacco and vape control by removing the protective measures under the Syntax law. The passage of the vape law not only overturned important provisions under our Syntax law, but it also opened the floodgates for more Filipinos, especially our youth, to use these harmful products and practically encourage such practice in the guise of regulation. We owe it to the next generation to guard them against an industry that seeks to profit at the expense of their health and safety. Sa kongreso pong ito, ilang beses akong tumayo para ipahayag sa inyo ang kalukohan ng tobacco industry. Lubos kong ikinagagalak na marami sa inyo ang nagpakita ng suporta sa kagustuhan ko na mapigilan natin ang industriya na sirain ang kalusugan ng ating mamamayan. I hope that you will join me in the filing of bills in the next Congress to hold this industry accountable and firmly put them in its place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you Senator Pia Caetano for that passionate speech. Before that, Senator Alan Peter Caetano.
Mr. President, just a manifestation. May I be allowed, Majority Leader? Mr. President, three topics, one manifestation, mabilis lang. First, may I associate myself with the topic of Senator Pia. Despite losing votes in the 2022 election, I really campaigned also on the issue of vape and e-cigs. Much study is needed, but delikado po talaga. If you go to Hong Kong and Singapore, it's a criminal offense. Sa atin, parang inencourage pa natin na lumaki yung industriya dito. Number two, may I congratulate everyone, including of course Senator Risa dun sa anti-pogo. Nung pinayagan po ang pogo, matagal na to, pero nung lumaki last administration, ang sinasabi, hindi namang Pilipino ang tumataya. Ang problema po, binagbawalan nating pogo, lumalaki namang po ngayon ang industriya ng online na mga Pilipino ang tumataya. So I hope the next Congress can look into this. It's not as addictive as isabong, but it will get there because gaming is addictive, using the internet is addictive. If you put the two together, you can do that kind of gambling anywhere, anytime. Napakadelikado para sa atin. So I want to honor those who warned us against pogo 15, 20 years ago, whatever it was called, pero we only acted upon it now. So sana po, we act on the online gaming soon in the 20th Congress. Lastly, Mr. President, may I also request that, I also request that the partial report or preliminary report, doon po sa tulay na nahulog po sa, na bumaksak sa Isabela, we did a few hearings, hindi pa natapos, but there are glaring loopholes, if I may call that, or lapses. And I did not expect that in my lifetime, we would investigate a bridge that collapsed. Nasanay na tayo ng defective yung anti-fliding, kaya bumabaha. Nasanay na tayo na medyo yung kalye bagong gawa inaaspalto na, di ba? Sanay tayo na merong iba na medyo ghost. Pero for a bridge worth 700, 800 million then increased to more than a billion then bumaksak, we really have to, kailangan talaga tong tutukan. So preliminary lang tong report na to, but whoever heads the Blue Ribbon Committee in next Congress, I hope that susundan to. And I thank those at DPWH who are giving this serious thought. Nung umpisa kasi, parang bumaksak, bumaksak, wala yung outrage, no? So anyway, Mr. President, kung walang objection, I hope we can include the preliminary report in our records just to guide the next committee chair and members in the next Congress. Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you Senator Alan Peter Caetano, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1376.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Consideration of proposed Senate Resolution Number 1376 is now in order. With the permission of the body, the secretary will read only the title of the resolution without prejudice to the insertion of its full text into the record. Sir, suspended. Secretary.
Resolution expressing the sincere appreciation of the Senate of the Philippines to the Honorable Senator Cynthia A. Villar for her distinguished public service and excellent performance during her tenure as Senator.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1376.
Any objection? Chair hears none. Proposed- Chair here is none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 1376 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, may we ask our Mama Bear, Senator Cynthia Villar, for response?
May we hear from Senator Cynthia Villar if there is any response?
Mister Senate President, esteemed colleagues, dear friends and fellow Filipinos. Twelve years ago, I entered the halls of the Senate with a clear intention to serve with integrity and use the knowledge I had to make a difference, especially to uplift the lives of those who need it most. Ang nais ko pong magamit ang aking karanasan upang mapataas ang kalidad ng buhay ng ating mga kababayan, lalo na ang ating mga magsasaka, na siyang nagpapakain sa atin. Ngunit madalas ay nananatiling kulang sa tulong at oportunidad. I'm honored to have been entrusted with the duties of Chairperson of the Senate Committee on Agriculture and Food and Agrarian Reform, and later of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change, roles that allowed me to work on areas where policies could create real and lasting impact for the Filipino people. As Chairperson of the Agriculture Committee, I focus on legislation that could directly support farmers, fisherfolks, and rural producers. These are some of the key laws I pass. RA 10654, which prevents illegal, unreported, and unregulated fishing. RA 10659, the Sugar Cane Industry Development Act. RA 10816, the Farm Tourism Development Act. RA 10817, Halal Export Development and Promotion Act. RA 10845, Anti-Agricultural Smuggling Act of 2016, which was strengthened by RA 12022, the Anti-Agricultural Sabotage Act of 2024. RA 10969, the Free Irrigation Service Act. RA 11203, the Rice Tarification Law, as enhanced by RA 12078. It established the annual rice competitiveness and enhancement fund to provide rice farmers with high-quality seeds, modern farm equipment, accessible credit, and capacity-building programs. RA 11511 enhances the Organic Agriculture Act and introduced the participatory guarantee system for smallholder certification. RA 11524, the Coconut Farmers and Industry Trust Fund Act, which... from the recovered Coco Levy funds to farmers via programs and support. RA 11547 declares Davos City as the chocolate capital and Region 11 as the cacau capital of the Philippines. RA 1711700 declares Catanduanes as the abaca capital of the Philippines. RA 11707 declares San Jose Batangas as the egg basket of the Philippines. RA 11901 expands rural and agricultural financing through the Agriculture, Fisheries, and Rural Development Financing Enhancement Act. RA 1953, New Agrarian Emancipation Act, which condoned 57 billion in unpaid amortization of 600,000 agrarian reform beneficiaries. RA 11985, the Philippine Salt Industry Development Act. And over 50 laws establishing 63 fish fisheries nationwide, fish hatcheries nationwide to boost aquaculture and local food production. As Chairperson of the Committee on Env... and later now, we just passed the livestock bill to enable the livestock farmers to recover from the ASF. As Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change, I pursued the legislative action to protect the companies... the countries, reach biodiversity, and promote sustainable use of natural resources. RA 11038, the Expanded National Integrated Protected Areas System, INI-PAS Act of 2018, which declared 94 new legislated protected areas across the country, such as forests, watershed, marine ecosystems, to ensure their long-term conservation and proper management. Ito po ay dati ay... 13 lang, kaya ano ipasa ko 'yung 97, rather, naging 107. Sampu lang dati. Nung ipasa ko 'yung 94, naging 107. Dagdag po rito, we have passed additional specific protected area laws. RA 11684, the Mount Arayat. RA 11685, Mount Pulag. RA 11686, Naga Cabansalan Protected Landscape. RA 11687, the Tiradpas. RA 11688, the Banau Protected Area. RA 11806, the Tukbo Natural Biotic Area. And RA 11933, Chicagoan Island White Sanctuary Act, which turned the 194 plus 13, 107, to 114, and now 120, additional 7, 124. We have also championed the passage of the Extended Producer Responsibility Act of 2022, which institutionalizes accountability in the use of plastic packaging by requiring producers to recover their plastic waste. This law encourages us to change now how we view waste to repurpose instead of simply discard and to see used materials as part of a circular economy. I hope this becomes a precedent, not just for plastic, but for other forms of waste, like electronic waste, bulk waste, hazardous material. Responsibility ng gumawa ayusin ang iniwang basura. During the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic, this August chamber quickly adopted. I was proud to be part of the institution that helped our nation respond and recover. We passed the Bayanihan Laws, funded emergency subsidies, and supported our health system, all while keeping essential food systems running. Throughout my term, I had the privilege of working with five Senate presidents, namely Senators Drilon, Pimentel, Tito Soto, Mig Subiri, and Chish Escudero. Thank you in your leadership, for your leadership and guidance. To my fellow senators, thank you for your friendship, collaboration, and many meaningful moments we shared in service. I was fortunate to have worked with all, with you all. Allow me to mention your names in alphabetical order. Sunny Angara, Bamakino, Nancy Binay, Alan Peter Kaitano, Pia Kaitano, Lila de Lima, the late Miriam Defensor Santiago, Bato de la Rosa, Franklin Drilon, J.B. Hersito, Francis Escudero, Jingoy Estrada, Win Gachalian, Richard Gordon Bongo, T.G. Gingona, Gringo Honasan, Risa Hontiveros, Ping Laxon, Lito Lapid, Lauren Legarda, our president Ferdinand Bombo Marcos Jr., Amy Marcos, Mani Paciao, Robin Padilla, Kiko Pangilinan, Coco Pimentel, Grace Po, Ralph Recto, Bong Revilla, Tito Soto, Sirius Mena III, Francis Tolentino, Rafi Tulpo, Sunny Trillanes II, Joel Villanueva, and Mark Villar. Nasabi ko na. To the Senate Secretariat and our entire support family from OSA to the elevator attendants who welcome us with their smiles, to the administrative committee and technical staff who assist us in every hearing and plenary session and in managing the respective senators' offices. Maraming salamat sa inyong tahimik, pero mahalagang papel sa ating araw-araw na trabaho. Hindi magiging maayos at makabuluhan ang aming paglilingkod kung wala ang inyong sipag, tyaga, and professionalism. To my staff and team, thank you for standing by me every step of the way. To the incoming and remaining senators, we live in complex times. Fake news and malicious narrative now easily damage reputations and erode public trust. And while some say this is all part of the job, it should not be. Let us remain anchored on the truth. Let us rise above the noise. Let us protect not just ourselves, but the very institution we serve. In this chamber, you fondly call me Mama Bear, a symbol moniker, but what one I took to heart. To be Mama Bear meant being firstly protective, genuinely caring, and always dependable. I saw it as a gesture of trust and respect and a reminder to always show up, give my best, and look out for those around me. My term may be ending, but my commitment to public service remains. Hindi po natatapos ang paglilingkod sa pagtatapos ng termino. Sa hilipito, ay simulan ang panibagong paraan na makabuluhang ambag sa bayan. Salamat, Panginoon, sa biyayan ang pagkakataong makapaglingkod. Salamat sa aking mga kasamahan sa mga kawaninang senado, pati na rin ang iba't ibang sangay ng gobyerno na nakatrabaho at nakasalamuhan natin. At higit sa lahat, sa ating mga kababayan, sa kanilang tiwala at patuloy na inspiration. Maraming salamat.
Maraming salamat. Session suspended.
Mr. President, I vote that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1375.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Secretary is directed to comply.
Resolution commending the Honorable Senator Grace L. Poe for her distinguished public service, outstanding performance, and invaluable contributions to the Senate and the Filipino people during her term as senator.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1375.
Session is... Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Senate Resolution Number 1375 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, to give her response, I move that we recognize the amazing grace of the Senate, Senator Grace Poe.
Senator Grace Poe is recognized. You may proceed, man.
Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, fellow public servants, and every Filipino I've had the privilege to serve. I rise with a full heart, a grateful spirit, and let's be honest, a bit of disbelief that 12 years have gone by so quickly. In 2013, and again in 2019, I was humbled to receive over 20 million votes each time. With that support came a quiet but persistent pressure to live up to FPJ's legacy and repay the trust that Filipinos gave me. Kaya naman sa loob ng labing dalawang taon, I filed close to 700 measures and passed more than half of that, 368 laws to be exact. Pero hindi ito tungkol sa dami. These laws were meant to respond to the everyday needs of the Filipino people who place their trust in all of us. Today, I stand before you, not just as a lawmaker, but as your humble public servant who has learned that the real power of this office lies not in the title, but in the trust and dreams of the people we serve. Maraming salamat po sa tiwala niyong lahat. Serving as your senator has been a humbling experience. There's nothing quite like being grilled in the plenary hall to remind me of what my mom, Susan Rosas, asked me when I first ran for public office. Sabi niya, "Pagbutihan mo at huwag mahihiang magtanong." But truly, this job has kept me grounded, sometimes by gravity of the issues and occasionally by the weight of the paperwork. Whether by design or more often by sheer lack... sheer luck or lack thereof, I somehow always found myself right in the middle of tough investigations, like the Mama Sapano massacre, MRT3 problems, the NIA glitch, the PUV modernization, and the wild world of ride-hailing apps and motorcycle taxis. At one point, I felt less like a senator and more like the Senate's designated crisis hotline operator. I am proud to have championed causes close to my heart, and I hope to yours. Indeed, I consider it the greatest blessing of my life to have witnessed, if not contributed, to the birth of several landmark laws. We fought for every Filipino child's right to a healthy start in life, where millions of mothers and their infants were provided with checkups and vitamins in the First 1,000 Days Law. With the Masustansyang Pagkain Para Sa Batang Pilipino Act, or more popularly known as the National Child Feeding Law, we made sure that no child goes to school on an empty stomach because math is hard enough without hunger pangs. Ngayon, mahigit tatlong milyong mag-aaral sa public schools at DSW daycare centers ang nabibigyan ng hot meals o mainit na pagkain taon-taon. Wala na siguro mas personal sa akin kundi ang pagpasan ng mga batas para mapadali ang proseso ng pag-aampon sa ilalim ng Simulated Birth Rectification Act at Domestic Administrative Adoption Act. Thank you again, Senator Risa. Under the Foundling Recognition and Protection Act, deserted and abandoned children are not just recognized as Filipinos, but guaranteed full rights and protections under this law. This was not just policy work for me. In many ways, it was healing. Hindi lang mga bata ang kailangan ng aruga hanggang sa pagtanda. Ako ay kaagapay ninyo sa Increase in Social Pension for Indigent Senior Citizens Act. Dinoble natin ang pension ng mga senior citizens na indigent, may karamdaman at walang income o suporta ng pamilya. Bawat pension ay isang libo para sa mga lolo't lola parang "I love you" galing sa gobyerno. Hindi lang sa buhay, pati sa huling goodbye, may libreng tulong na. Sa Free Funeral Services Act na pinasa natin nito lang, libre na ang burol para sa mga indigent para hindi na kailangan pang mangutang habang nagluluksa. One of my first laws as senator was the Free Mobile Disaster Alerts Act. Filipinos receive accurate and reliable information in their mobile phones before and when disaster strikes. Simple man ang batas, pero maraming buhay ngayon ang naliligtas tuwing may bagyo o kalamidad. We leave behind laws that have not only responded to unprecedented times, but also paved the way to a more resilient and robust future. The amendments to the 86-year-old Public Service The amendments to the 86-year-old Public Service Act allowed more players to invest in sectors like telecommunications and transportation while still safeguarding national security and interests. New internet service providers like SpaceX are now making inroads in the Philippines because of the Public Service Act. Ngayon, pwede na magkaroon ng mga hearing, ang mga nasa tawi-tawi, at ang ating mga Supreme Court justices ay sila mismong dumidinig dahil nga dito sa mga serbisyo ng mga telecommunications. The Connectadong Pinoy Act will supplement this in bridging the digital divide. I am also honored to be part of paving the way for projects like the NIA Rehabilitation, the New Manila International Airport, and the Bulacan Ecozone, where progress isn't just a buzzword, but a reality that is already on its way. We've also made inroads in making the country a more walkable and bikeable place, thanks to the provisions we introduced in the Bayanihan laws, which we sustained in subsequent budgets. With measures like the Financial Institution Strategic Transfer Act and the amendments to the Anti-Money Laundering Act, we made sure that our financial system is in check. Kahit papano, nabubuko 'yung mga nagtatago ng pera katulad nun sa Pogo hearings. Kailangan lang natin ifund pa sila ng mas mabuti para lumawak ang kanilang supervision. Laws like the Anti-Financial Accounts Scamming Act, Apasa, and the SIM Registration Act now act as our shields against scammers. Nitong nakaraang taon lang, may 3.6 billion spam messages at 3.3 million na SIMs na ginagamit sa krimen at napaka-decommission natin sa mga telcos. Sa ngalan naman ng serbisyo publiko, humigit kumulang 143 franchises ang ating naaprubahan simula 2016. Mula major broadcast companies tulad ng GMA, TV5, Manila Broadcasting Company, at Signal TV. Sayang, hindi umabot ng ABS-CBN. Religious broadcasters gaya ng Iglesia Ni Cristo at CBCP, tatlong major telco players na Smart, Globe, at Dito, water providers na Maynilad at Manila Water, power distributors tulad ng More Power at Negroes Electric, pati na ang mga airlines gaya ng Skyjet at Air Philippines. Iba-ibang sektor para akong nangolekta ng diploma ng engineering sa kuryente at tubig, masters in ICT, pilot license, pati divinity. Para maiwasan ang buong araw ng pila sa mga transport offices, we also pushed for the creation and upgrade of 65 LTO offices, three LTFRB, and three Marina offices nationwide since 2016 para hindi na masyadong malayo ang biyahe ng ating mga kababayan para lamang kumuha ng lisensya at iba pang mga permits. Maliit na bagay, pero malaking ginawa para sa nagre-renew ng lisensya at nagre-rehistro ng kanilang mga sasakyan. We also tackled red tape with longer passport and driver's license validity. Since its implementation, our passports are now valid for 10 years, while more than 10 million individuals have benefited from extended validity of driver's licenses. 10 years then. Ang buhay ngayon ang Pilipino, hindi na puro pila, puro biyahe. I won't bore you with a long list. After all, 12 years is a long time, and I've given you a long list already. The Senate President so generously gave me this time to say my goodbyes. But in that time, I'm proud to have worked on thousands of measures, survived endless hours of hearings, and collaborated with so many brilliant experts who made the journey worthwhile. The laws I mentioned earlier are just a small sample of what we accomplished together. So instead of a laundry list, let me just say, it's been quite a ride. There are few measures in the pipeline bills we're hoping to pass in the 19th Congress, like the Revised Animal Welfare Act, but I leave that to all of you because I know a lot of you are animal lovers. Having had the privilege and occasional headache of chairing committees from finance, economic affairs, to public services, banks, public information, and public order, I've learned that keeping your cool is just as vital as keeping your facts straight, especially during marathon hearings that last so long, our Mondays turn into Tuesdays and so on. My sincerest thanks to all the resource persons who braved the hot seat, survived the grilling, and somehow managed to keep us awake. Maging ito man ay gulat or galit. To all government agencies who I have called upon during my hearings, who are now marked safe. As I exit the Senate, I leave with no regrets. Of course, none of this would have been possible without the support of my colleagues, especially the able sponsors of the law I've mentioned, Senators Mark Villar, Senator Risa, several bills in fact that are laws, Senator Bam Aquino, Senator Amy Marcos, Senator Alan Cayetano, our hard-working Senate staff and secretariat, committee secretariat, and the Filipino people who never failed to remind me sometimes loudly on social media of what truly matters. Thank you for keeping me honest, keeping me humble, and keeping me on my toes and sometimes awake at night. To my fellow senators from past and present, and those incoming as well, the Senate is a chamber where only the prepared, not necessarily the popular, endure. I have it in your hands and your conscience. Every moment in these halls has been a teachable moment, and I can only hope that I have returned the same to each of you. Please permit me a final roll call. To my fellow graduating senators, my classmates since 2013, Senator Nancy Binay, Coco Pimentel, and also Senator Francis Tolentino, Bong Revilla, and also another classmate since 2013, Senator Villar. Congratulations. After years of debates, interpolations, and endless sessions, we can finally rest, or at least pretend we will. Alam ko si Nancy hindi, kasi babalik sa Makati. You've left your mark on this chamber and on me. To Senator Nancy, whose family history with mine is colorful, but whose friendship has never been black or white, your sharp wit and radiant smile will surely brighten Makati City Hall. Senator Nancy, even if she's seemingly quiet, has the most insightful grasp of issues and has all the inside information. To the minority leader par excellence, Senator Coco Pimentel, who gave me the book that I will always cherish on 2004. Magkasama tayo since 2004. Insistent and yielding a true son of his father, my dad really admired your father, who valued being right over being popular. Thank you, sir. To the majority leader, whose legal mind defended our seas with unwavering resolve, Senator Toll, I pray for your return. Senator Bong Revilla danced into the hearts of many and repaid that trust with meaningful bills in his third term, including bills for teachers and allowances for teachers, and always has a kind heart, who always helps those who are struggling in their campaign. I know you helped me in 2013. Thank you, Sen Bong. We await your return in the Senate. To the Villars, Mama Bear Cynthia, who has shown Quiet Bear Mark the ropes. Mark's defense of the Maharlika bill was strong, and we look forward to Senator Camille's arrival. Thank you, Senator Cynthia, for helping us pass in the Senate the Animal Welfare Bill. Thank you. Actually, talagang malaking tulong ito at pinagbigyan talaga ako ni Senator Cynthia. Sabi ko, last-minute request. And dahil sanay na sanay na, kahit hindi pa napapasa ang Animal Welfare Bill sa House, nalagyan na niya ng funding sa susunod na bill ng livestock. Pero merong Animal Welfare category doon. Senator Mark, thank you also for your kindness always. To Senator and now Secretary, Sunny Angara, even if you're not exactly here in the chamber now, thank you for leading us as your steadfast chairperson of the Finance Committee, proving you can handle big numbers and bigger challenges. Now, as Deped Secretary, we're counting on you to balance the classroom chaos with the same steady hand. And to the senators who will continue serving in the 20th Congress, congratulations. You get to work nonstop all over again, but seriously, your dedication has been the backbone of this Senate, and I am excited to see you carry the torch forward. Thank you, Senator Winn, for ably steering hearings and personally attending TWGs. Ikaw ang pinakamasipag na staff ng senado. We might as well rename the committee Ways and Win. Talagang laging handa, may notebook palagi. Thank you, Senator Joelle, for your energizing Bruce, your jokes, your stories, and for standing with me when it truly counted. I am relieved that you are still here to champion important causes that are dear to my heart, like the welfare of our PUV drivers, for I know that someone as passionate and dedicated as you will continue to fight for always upholding the interest of the Senate as an institution. To the formidable Cayetano duo, Alan and Pia, few Senate twosomes are as formidable as you. Your incisive interpolations taught me much, and I hope I return the favor. But seriously, Senator Pia, you really read all the bills through, even the adoption bill, which you refined. Thank you so much also for being a true advocate for health. For Senator Alan Cayetano, who I fondly sometimes call Unicorn because there are sightings of him, but when he comes here... There you go. I rest my case, but who always comes out when we need him and will always give valuable insights and interesting viewpoints in a debate. The new... Ano nga 'yung ating bagong term ngayon, 'yung kay Bato? Bagong term, Batorny de la Rosa.
Unicornee.
Oo, so unicornie. But really, Senators Alan and Pia, both brilliant lawyers that have really steered the Senate in very productive discussions. Thank you very much. To our three Mindanao champions, Bato, Bong, and Robin, thank you for fiercely advocating for Mindanao's people and their concerns. Senator Bong, ang malasakit centers mo, marami talaga ang hindi nakakalimot na niyan. Senator Robin, alam namin, hindi ka palang senador, marami ka ng natutulungan, at patuloy ang iyong pagtulong at hindi mo rin nakakalimutan ang mga kapatid mo sa industriya ng Pilikulang Pilipino. Hindi man palaging nagkakatugma ang ating pananaw, pero alam nila, pinaglalaban mo sa iyong pananaw ang tama para sa ating mga kasama sa industriya. Senator Bato de la Rosa, isa sa pinakamatapang na alam ko talagang ipaglalaban kung anong kanyang paniniwala. Kasama ko sa lounge, pinakamasayang kasama sa lounge. At alam kong hindi natatakot, hindi nagtatago dahil laging handa naman siya at pag merong hamon sa kanya, cool pa rin. At 'yung mga batas niya na ipinaglalaban ay talagang para din sa kapakanan ng ating militarin, ng ating mga kapulisan. Maraming salamat. To the two sons of Joseph of San Juan, let me finally settle this. Jingo is erap, classic macho, champion of the masa, brusco. JV is erap plus sleek, sharp, yet still fueled by his father's warmth. A true kapatid. Pareho ka kayong kapatid, pero si JV, hindi nakakalimot sa kanyang inaanak tuwing Pasko. At saka syempre, si JV, classmate ng asawa ko, pero ikaw naman, hindi ka nakakalimot na pakainin ako. Palagi mo akong pinapadala ng pagkain. Maraming salamat. So to Senator Lito, who was here when I arrived in 2013... Who was here earlier, I can attest to that, and remains our steadfast pinuno today. Your pulse on the masses has softened and strengthened our legislation. To the ever-gracious Lauren Legarda, who is like fine wine, not just in looks, but in timeless causes. Hindi pa uso noon ang climate change at pinagtatawanan siya. Talagang desidido siyang ipaglaban ito, at ngayon, 'yan na ang isa sa pinakaimportante nating issue. Pati kultura. True senators like Lauren fight long battles, not just viral trends. To our superate, Amy Marcos, who stood as a lone voice against the tide, proving that critic is a form of love. Thank you also, Senator, for your bills passing for the indigent senior citizens and many other bills that you championed that I filed. Thank you very much for your hard work, your witty quips, and your fashion sense that you give us ideas. Senator Rafi Tulfo, our man of action, no problem too small, no agency too big, the two Tulfos will be a force to reckon with. To Senator Risa, thank you for fearlessly probing the darkest corners of government. Your investigations are nothing short of popcorn-worthy, destined for the big screen. But seriously, I admire your courage. Thank you. To the esteemed Senate Presidents throughout my years here, Senate President Franklin Drelon, Coco Pimentel, Tito Soto, Mig Zubiri, and Chez Escudero, each of you has uniquely steered this chamber with steadfast leadership. Tito Frank, you were the best constitutional and parliamentary mentor that I could ever wish for. Tito Sen, you're the great fiscalizer that any Congress would be lucky to have. Senator Miggs, the chairman emeritus of charm. Your charm and diplomacy continue to bridge divides, and I wish that when you take a break from the Senate, you would be the wisest choice for the Secretary of Foreign Affairs. Thank you for giving me my most enjoyable time in the Senate as friends. Thank you. Senate President Chez, I've called him many names, often behind his back. But more importantly, even if he's younger than me, he's my kuya, my confidant, a call of friend for over a decade. He stood by my father when no one else did, and by me when few believed. For everything, maraming salamat. Pero marami rin mga problema. Bagamat. Hindi mo ako iniwan, hindi tayo nag-iwanan, and that friendship has surpassed, has actually gone beyond politics. Thank you. It's really nice to see you up there. Very formal, sometimes too strict, we're not too happy about that, but masyadong micromanager, but I know that we want everything in order. Now to my special mentions, also, of course, I mentioned already Senator Coco as a Senate President also. Now to my special mentions who also graced these halls and made my life as a senator more colorful. To former Senator Ralph Recto, the Senate's sharpest interpolator, who could turn any question into another question, into another question until it turns into a full-on grilling session. You proved that being right beats being popular, though I suspect you secretly enjoyed both. To former Senator Sunny Trillanes, whose fearless stand for good governance reminded us that sometimes standing alone is not just brave, but downright heroic. Thanks for showing us that being the lone wolf can actually get things done. To returning Senator Bam Aquino, still fighting for educational reforms, thank you for helping me by sponsoring... Thank you for helping me by sponsoring the National Feeding Program. I am ecstatic for your return and I know that your return will truly be a benefit for the Senate and for the Filipino people. To returning Senator Ping Lakson, whose dedication to justice and security is as unwavering as his famous poker face. With you around, we know the fight for safer Philippines is in good hands. And to former Senator Serge Osmania, you're the steady hand, seasoned wisdom, and policy mentor during my early days here. Please know that your guidance helped me find my own voice and shape my view on governance and for that I am grateful. Also to my seatmate Senator Manny Pacquiao. I had the privilege of working with Senator Enrile, Senator Miriam Defensor Santiago, Senator Lila de Lima, Senator Dick Gordon. Okay, if I've forgotten, I'm sure this will be on the record anyway. And last but not the least, to my family. Neil, for 33 years, thank you, napagtyagaan mo ako. Especially na pinaso ko ang mundo ng politika, hindi ka sanay dyan, hindi ka sang-ayon masyado, pero ngayon, I don't think I would be able to meet all the challenges without you being such a supportive and patient husband. Brian, I can say that as your mom, I think I learned about politics more from you than you have from me. Thank you for being my number one campaign coordinator from 2013 and then later on, my researcher, my consultant, and then my chief of staff. Now, can you believe this? You're actually going to be in Congress. So congratulations. To my two daughters Hannah and Nika, who is so far removed from politics, but who have also followed me to the best of their, well, as much as they could. I remember when you used to say Bam is a guy? They didn't know much about politics then, but now they really listen to all the issues. Thank you also for supporting Mama and for being patient. I know Nika, while you were growing up, I didn't have that much time with you because I was already working. But you've grown up to be a fine woman and Hannah, thank you for working very hard at your job. Uwi na ako para sa pinakamahal kong papel, ang maging ina at asawa. Sa mga Pilipino, maraming maraming salamat po sa inyong tiwala. Salamat sa pagkakataon makapaglingkod, hindi lang bilang inyong senador, kundi bilang inyong anak, ina, kapatid, at kaibigan. You gave a foundling her name, her mission, and her home. In return, I gave you my whole heart. It has been the greatest honor of my life. Salamat poong nasareno. Maaring bumagsak na ang tabing sa yugtong ito, ngunit ang kwento ko ay patuloy na isinusulat para sa mga pangako ko sa aking ama, kay FPJ, kay Susan, at sa milyong milyong Pilipinong nagtiwala at naniwala sa akin. Bukas pa rin ang ating pahina. Baka naman may plot twist. Abangan ang susunod na kabanata, sabi nga ni FPJ, hindi patapos ang laban. So thank you very much and I hope you'll indulge me one last time with a very short audiovisual presentation. Thank you.
Gustong maging senador para makatulong maibsa ng kahirapan. Papano mo gagawin 'yan? Ipaglalaban ko na may sapat na pagkain ang mga bata. Anak, pag nagawa mo 'yan, matutupad na rin ang pangarap ng tatay mo. Pati rin po sa inyo. Promise 'yan ha? Promise po. Pagbutihan mo.
Ang susunod na kandidato ay tatak, FPJ.
Kahit bagito sa politika, nanguna siya sa 2013 senatorial election.
Inihiling ko po ang inyong patuloy na panalangin. Para naman maisulong natin ang programang makakatulong sa pinakamahirap nating kababayan.
Hindi lang basta nakapila ng hanggang 4 na 5 minuto, nakipagkwentuhan pa sa ibang sakay ng MRT kanina si Senator Grace po.
Ang pagkakaroon ng publiko ng access o pagkuha ng impormasyon ay nakakatulong para paigtingin ang pananagutan at responsibilidad ng pamahalaan tungo sa pagtugon ng pangangailangan ng mga mamamayan.
Government should not be in the business of making money, it should be in the business of service.
Ang ating mga anak sa public school ay meron ng magtuna na pagkain. Ito po ang ating investment for the future.
Sabrapo laki ng first 1,000 date sa pamamagitan po ng mga gamot kong binibigay at mga prenatal checkup at wala pong bayan.
Lahat po tayo tatanda, ito ay kabayaran din sa pag-aaruga at pag-alaga na binigay sa atin ang ating mga magulang, lolo, at lola.
Magiging paliksahan ang pagbibigay ng tekalidad na serbisyo at produkto sa pinakamababang presyo para sa mga Pilipino. Inaasahan natin ito na ang magwawakas sa take it or leave it attitude ng mga nagpakakasasang monopoliya nitong nakaraang siglo.
We passed this to incentivize to cut red tape, but in return for the privilege, they need to be qualified, they need to follow the law so that they will get the full privilege and advantage that this law will bestow upon them.
Pinadali natin ang pag-aambol para mas maraming bata ang magkaroon ng pagkakataon.
Our journey has clearly shown that just as it takes a village to raise a child, it also takes a village to produce a law that we can all be proud of.
Hindi ako perpekto, pero sa halos 12 ang taon ko sa Senado, talagang ginawa ko ang aking makakaya para ipagpatuloy ang magandang pangalan ni FPJ.
Maraming salamat po, at isa pa palang colleague na kasama natin, presidente na kasi, kaya hindi ko nalabang yet, President Bong Bong Marcos na kasama natin na sa colleague here.
Thank you Senator Paul, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1378.
Any objection? Hearing none. Secretary is directed to comply.
Resolution commending the Honorable Senator Ramon Bong Revilla Jr. for his dedicated service and invaluable contributions to the Senate and the Filipino people during his term as Senator.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1378.
Any objection? Hearing none. Resolution Number 1378 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we recognize ang senador poggi ng ating Senado, Senator Ramon Bong Revilla Jr.
My good friend, Senator Bong Revilla is recognized. You may proceed sir.
Mga kababayan, mga kasama kong lingkodbayan, mga kapwa ko senador, isang tauspusong pagbati sa inyong lahat. Mahirap sundan si Senator Grace at si Senator Cynthia. Sa aking pagtindig sa bulwagang ito, sa huling pagkakataon para sa ikalabing siyam ng Kongreso, hindi ko po mapigilang sariwain ang mga nakalipas ng taon. I stand here today not only with pride worn on my sleeve for the triumphs that we have all collectively achieved, but also with a sense of heaviness. Isang bigat na hindi dulot ng pagkalungkot, but of the weight of all the memories we have weaved together, of all the lessons learned, of the privilege of public service, of gratitude for the mandate entrusted to us, and of a love for this country. After over 2,000 bills and resolutions uttered and 347 of them enacted into law, here I am in front of you today with no regrets and only an even deeper yearning to continue what we have started and to bring to life the future that we are determined to build for our people. Bawat tasa ng kape, bawat pahina ng mga briefers, bawat tao na nakadaupang palad natin seems only yesterday. Ang mga pinagsamahan natin, all of them still fresh in my memory, pero ngayon ay mga alaala na nangkahapon. Lahat nga daw ng pagpalaot ay may pagdaong muli sa dalampasigan. Sa kabila nito, isa ang malinaw. Ang puso natin ay mananatiling nakaangkla sa serbisyo publiko. Tatlong dekada na ang nakaraan ng unang sumagot ako sa tawag ng paglilingkodbayan. I was only 28 when I was elected Vice Governor and 37 when I joined the Senate. I was the greenhorn. Napakapalad ko pong nakasama at natuto mula kina, tulad nila Senator Joker Arroyo, Senator Miriam Defensor Santiago, Senator Nene, Senator Juan Ponce Enrile, at siyempre kayong lahat na mga kasama ko ditong mga napakagaling na mga senador. At siyempre ang ating mga mahuhusay na Senate presidents like Senator Drelon, Villar, Enrile, Soto, Zubiri, and Espie Escudero. Mga leader na may natatanging tatak at talino sa parindigan. Sa kanilang pamumuno, higit nating naitaguyod ang dangal ng Senado na ipagpatuloy ang ating paglilingkod sa sambayan ng Pilipino na may tapang at prinsipyo. At sa tatlong taon na lumipas, taas noong masasabi na hinubog tayo ng karanasan, na pinanday ng lahat ng mga leksyon sa buhay. Honed and shaped into the public servant I am today. Ito ay sa kabila ng lahat ng mga dagok at pagsubok, nawaring malakas na alon na humampas sa aking paglalakbay. The truth is, there was a time I doubted ever coming back. Sapagkat hindi namang po kaila sa lahat ang aking kwento kung paano pinutikan ang aking reputasyon at pagkatao na matagal kong iningatan. The journey back here was not easy. Nagbalik ako sa Senado, hindi lamang ng may karanasan, kung hindi may mga pilat ng nakaraan. Ngunit gaya ng kawayang sumasabay ng imbay ng hangin at marunong yumuko, muli tayong tumayo, hindi lamang para sa ating sarili, kung hindi para sa lahat ng mga Pilipinong naniwala sa ating ipinaglalaban. Sila na hindi bumitaw, sila na lumamlam ng pagmamahal sa atin. For them whose faith is in us never wavered. From them who know, appreciate, and trust our brand of service. One that is not driven by perfection, but by perseverance. Kaya naman sinuklian natin ang mga tiwalang pinagkalooob sa atin. Long hours spent in deliberation, all the times we burn the midnight oil to craft legislation that is not only beneficial, but genuinely impactful and echoing with the purposeful meaning. Puso, luha, dugo ang naging punla ng mga pangarap natin para sa ating mga kababayan. Unti-unti nating pinagtulungang tuparin. With one hand on my chest, I can confidently say that we gave them nothing less than our all. Hindi para sa papuri o pagkilala, ngunit bilang pagtupad sa sagradong tungkulin ng ating sinumpaan sa ngalan ng serbisyo publiko. Hindi man laging laman ang mga pahayagan. Hindi man laging nabibigyan espasyo sa prime time saksi ng mga pahina ng kasaysayan kung paanong itinaguyod at ipinaglaban natin lalo na ang mga kababayan nating hikahos sa buhay. I am proud to have served this institution for three terms. Three terms where I learned from the best and most brilliant minds. Tatlong termino kung saan binigyan ako ng pagkakataon na humabi ng mas matibay na koneksyon sa ating mga kababayan. And in this 19th Congress, like all the ones before it, we pass laws that will outlive us. Our legislative accomplishments that have become landmark laws on social justice, education, health, economic recovery, the welfare of our workers, and the marginalized. Mga batas na hindi lamang may silbi, kung hindi dama ng ating mga kababayan. Dahil sa huli, hindi lamang ang mga mabulaklak na salita na umalinga-hungaw sa bawat sulok ng institusyon ito ang mahalaga, kung hindi ang tunay na epektino ito sa pagtaas ng antas ng pamumuhay ng bawat Pilipino. How these laws have brought them a step closer to the fulfillment of their dreams and aspirations. This is our legacy more powerful than the portrait spread across our halls. And while we have every reason to hold our heads high for all we have achieved thus far, we are even more grounded and humbled by the realization of our mission is far from over. It is true that there is still much to be done, but I look at it more than just a challenge, but as a fountain of strength from which we will draw our purpose even more. As I flip to the next page of this story called "Life", it is only proper to not only look back, but give thanks. To my colleagues, we were thrust into a period in our history where we were tested by one global crisis after the other and all of epic proportions. Hindi naging madali ang laban, taya ang buhay, pero nanatili tayong tapat sa ating mga sinumpaang tungkulin at tapat sa bayan. For the battles we fought together and from across the aisle during debates and interpolations. Thank you, mga kapatid. To the Senate Secretariat, na mga dalaga at minatalamang noon, ngayon ay kasabay ng pagputi ng inyong buhok at pagkabihasa na sa paghubog ng mga batas, ay saludo po ako sa inyo. Thank you. Sa mga pages, sa Senate, at Senate media, mga kasapi, nangadito natin sa mga usaha, mga nasa lounge, sa lahat ng ating mga nakasama dito, maraming-maraming salamat po. At siyempre, to our hard-working staff, maraming salamat sa pakikipaglaban sa likuran namin. The world may not know, but the work you do waters the seeds of our ambition. Sa aking may bahay, mama, sa aking mahala pamilya, ah, sa inyo ko hinuhugot ang aking lakas. Thank you for the steadfast support and enduring love. What I gave the country, you gave up for me. Higit sa lahat, sa lahat ng Pilipino na nagbigay sa kanila, ng kanilang tiwala, sa kabila ng pangahamak sa mga artistang tulad ko, nanatili kayong mula't sa katotohanan ang puso ni Bong Rebelea noong paman ay laging para sa ating mga kababayan. Utang ko ang lahat ng aking nakarmit, ang aking lahat ng narating, kundi dahil sa inyo. Kayo ang kaluluwa ng bawat titik at letra ng mga batas na inukit sa kasaysayan sa ngalan ng inyong kapakanan. It is my hope that you have felt me as your senator. Hindi lamang salita, kung hindi sa action. It pains me to have faced defeat in the elections not for the loss of title or position, but for the missed opportunity to continue the honor and privilege of being the voice of our people in this chamber. Pero hindi namang po ako nangangamba dahil nandito lahat ang mga magigiting at mahuhusay nating senador, natulad nating mapagmahal sa bayan. And while I will never regret fighting, the good fight for our people, the only sorrow that lingers in my spirit isn't this: the dreams left deferred as well as the reforms we were still so ready to pursue and fight for. Pero sa nakatakdang panahon, alam natin na ang panghihinayang na ito ay mapapalitan ng kalinawan na ang mga tanong ay matutumbasan din ng kasagutan. And by God's grace, in His perfect time, ang paglalagom ng yugtong ito ay magbubunsod ng pagbabaling ng bagong pahina. Isang pahina na hindi basta isinulat, kundi iginuhit ng pagasa. Itinala ng pangarap na at ibinangon ng tapang at prinsipyo para sa sambayan ng Pilipino na sinumpaan kong ipaglalaban. Hindi lamang sa buhay na ito, kung hindi sa bawat buhay ng pinagkalooob ng may kapal. Hindi ito wakas, kung hindi panibagong yugtong, na saan man dalhin ang agos ng buhay, may posisyon man o wala, lagi akong titindig para sa bansa at taong bayan. Isa ang tiyak nyong maasahan si Bong Rebelea, kung gaano ang sigasig sa loob ng bulwagang ito, gayon din bilang pribadong mamamayan. Today, may be goodbye for some, while for others, it may be a transition. Ngunit para po sa akin, ito ay isang kabanata lamang nalalagpasan at hindi tatambayan. And as I walk away from this podium, one final time this evening, I do so not with finality, but with renewed and strengthened resolve. Dahil ang tunay na paglilingkod ay hindi napapatid sa pagwawakas ng termino. Ito ay habang buhay na panata. For this love I have for the country and our people has never been seasonal. Dahil ang pagmamahal sa bayan ay hindi parang termino na may expiration, kung hindi parang posisyon na iniriritiro. After all, public service is not attached to a position. It is a commitment and it is calling that I will always willingly and wholeheartedly answer. Laging naninindigan, malaging maninindigan sa tama, bit-bit ang dangal ng bayan at pusong alay sa sambayanan. Muli, maraming-maraming salamat po at lagi nyong tatandaan. Nandito lang, si Bong Rebelea. Thank you very much.
Session is suspended. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1377.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of the aforementioned resolution is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution commending the Honorable Senator Maria Lourdes Nancy S. Binay for her dedicated service to the nation and outstanding performance during her term as senator.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1377.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 1377 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, I move that we recognize na honorary ang brown beauty ng senado. May kasin, hindi ko po siya pinsan kasing itim. Senator Lourdes Nancy Binay.
Senator Nancy Binay is recognized. You may proceed, ma'am.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, honored guests, thank you for the opportunity to address this August chamber for the last time. I must admit, I was hesitant to go through with this valedictory as I am not overly fond of goodbyes. Yet responsibility and tradition must always trump personal desire and that is why I yield to the wisdom of custom. Many see tradition in a negative light, but perhaps as we see various institutions crumble because they neglect or forget their purpose and jump on every new way that opens up, this is also a reminder for us to look within ourselves and to look back. The Senate is an institution built on tradition, not because we are an old-fashioned bunch that stubbornly clings to the past, but because it must by function bridge the present and the future to the past. The people have looked to the Senate as a bastion of democracy because the Senate is memory and conscience, because it was built as an ideal, a place where members are expected to uphold decorum and respect alongside their sworn duty to serve the public interest. But I am not here to lecture. Rather, I am here to express my thanks. I entered this chamber 12 years ago under less than ideal circumstances, winning a mandate to serve, but also with a target on my back. Dakilang, alalay lang daw ako, pinuna ang kulay ng balat ko. Nasa CJB. Pati ang mga damit ko. Ginawang meme na viral sa social media. They say the Senate is like the stage where every move is scrutinized under glaring light. But I've always believed in making lemonade out of lemons. So I came out with not one, but two books about bullying and the philosophy on niceness and treating other people with respect and love. I am grateful for all the criticism, both the deserved and uncalled for, which has made my skin thicker. We need thick skin in governance, not so we can remain callous to the people's pleas, but so that we can trudge forward and stay true to what we believe in, even when it is unpopular or against the dominant powers. I am also thankful to the Filipino people that has afforded me the opportunity to prove myself, that they have kept an open mind, let go of their prejudices, and accepted me when I was able to show what I was capable of. I wish to thank my colleagues, past and present. As a neophyte who belonged in the minority in 2013, I count myself lucky to have been able to rely on stalwarts such as then-minority leader Senator Juan Ponce Enrile, among others, to initiate me on the value of rigor and tradition, on the nuances of coalition building and deliberation that is the bulk of our work as lawmakers. I am thankful for having found true friends in the seatmates block. Our work is difficult and asks so much of us. I owe my survival on having friends like you who made working fun despite all the challenges.
Maraming salamat sa Senate Secretariat, ang unsang heroes ng kamarang ito. Lalo na po sa mga nakasama ko noong ako'y naging Chairman ng Committee on Accounts. Nakasama kong nag-iikot halos kada linggo sa New Senate Building. Maraming salamat din sa mga comsec na naassign sa lahat ng aking chairmanship. You are the bedrock upon which all our meaningful work is built.
To my staff, who have kept me company on this journey, like a family, we have gone through the ups and downs and sideboard lurches of work amid ever-changing times. I am glad that I have been able to call upon you. I am confident that from here on, you will continue to make a difference wherever you choose to serve. My actual family have served as my compass and shield in the 12 years I have served here and beyond. All the best of me is because of them. To my ex-boyfriend and to my children, thank you for sharing me with our people and understanding that I cannot be a full-time mom because of my other responsibilities. To my father, former Vice President General Mar Binay, and my mother, Dr. Elena Binay, from you I have learned much of what now guides me in service. Esteemed colleagues, I will leave it up to history to judge whether my work was deserving of my position as a senator. I came here with good intentions, armed with a notion of how to apply the teachings of my father, a lifelong public servant, the principal-
the principles of honor, excellence, and service of our shared alma mater, the University of the Philippines as well as the principles of ora et labora instilled by the St. Scholasticus College in my formative years. I would like to believe that I tried. I have advocated various measures that are close to my heart and poured time and energy towards the many causes that our institution has taken up to serve the people. I am thankful to have been at the forefront of history even as I mourn some of the changes that we have witnessed as a nation. I leave these halls not with a heart that is heavy from regrets but a heart made full by many kindnesses that I have encountered. Hindi ako nawawalan ng pag-asa ng ang senado ay mananatiling haligin ang kalayaan na masasandigan ng taong bayan. Salamat sa pagiging bahagi ng yugtong ito ng buhay ko at sana magkakaroon pa din tayo ng pagkakataon na magtulungan para naman sa lungsod na pamumunuan ko. Kaya, abangan niyo po ang mga folders na ipapadala ko sa office niyo. Muli po, maraming, maraming salamat.
Thank you Senator Binay. Noted. Entered into the record. Session suspended.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1374.
Any objection?
Hearing none. Senate Secretaries, directed to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution commending the Minority Leader of the Senate, the Honorable Aquilino Coco LP Mintel III for his exemplary leadership and significant contributions to the nation as a statesman, legislator, and advocate of justice.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1374.
Any objection?
Hearing none. Senate Resolution Number 1374 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, I move that we recognize the honorary our Minority Leader ang kokote ng senado, Senator Aquilino Coco Pimentel III.
Our distinguished Minority Floor Leader Senator Coco Pimentel
Thank you, thank you.
is recognized. You may proceed sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, my dear colleagues, our Senate staff, our Senate Secretariat, our guests, my Commander in Chief is also here, our dear countrymen. Magandang gabi po sa inyo lahat. I am about to deliver my valedictory speech. This is one perk of being a senator which I would relish the most. My father was the valedictorian of all his classes throughout his academic life from elementary, high school, college, and even up to college of law. I was never a valedictorian but I still get to deliver a valedictory speech. Swerte ko naman. Sabi ng ating konstituzyon, sovereignty resides in the people and all government authority emanates from them. I have been blessed by God and the Filipino people with the opportunity to hold a high government position. These 13-plus years I have spent as a senator in the service of the Filipino people have been the most fulfilling years of my life. This is an opportunity and an experience not given to many. I am very grateful to the universe for this. Who would have predicted or who would have thought that this would happen to an introvert person like me? My Senate journey began not in the usual way but through an extraordinary and unique experience that tested our resolve and faith in the democratic process. But I am grateful that what began as an electoral protest has since grown into a relationship marked by mutual respect, collaboration, and even friendship. A reminder kumpari pa. So a reminder, a reminder that in the end we are all here to serve the Filipino people. So let me go back to the decision which allowed me to be a part of this chamber, Mr. President. Siguro nalimutan na nila pero hindi ko po nalilimutan. 'Yung mga senador who voted to allow me to sit in the Senate in my protest way back in August 11, 2011. Piya, kayetano. So hindi ko nalilimutan 'yung piya. So, so thank you very much. Bong, baka nalimutan mo na but you were part of it. Thank you very much, Bong. And of course, returning Senator Kiko Pangilinan and former Senator Gregor Nasan and Sani Trillanes and also Lito Lapid was a member of the SET. And I just want to make it of record, Mr. President, the justices from the Supreme Court who made possible my stint as a senator, then Senior Associate Justice, the Chairman of the SET, Antonio Carpio, Associate Justice Teresita Leonardo de Castro and Associate Justice Arturo Breon. So this, this chapter in my life, now while unconventional, set the tone for the kind of public service I aspire to offer, one rooted in truth and justice, constitutionalism, rule of law, and the unwavering dedication to serve the people's interest. Napansin nga ni Senator Risa Ontiveros because this is our last day so I'm about to end my tenure as a senator. Sabi niya, ang book ends na political life mo. Andito si Komelek sa umpisa. Andito pa rin si Komelek sa dulo. Because if you remember, my dear colleagues, last December 11, 2024, you were already congratulating me. But that was six months ago. So six, so six months later, hindi pa rin tapos ang issue na yun. So I hope, I hope nagdiilang ang hilay ngayon noong six months ago, Mr. President. In 2016, this chamber entrusted me with the honor of being Senate President, a role previously held by my father, Senate President Nene Pimentel. For, can I reveal, ma'am? Ma'am Loren, can I reveal that? Ikaw may kasalanan nito. Yes, wala po akong ambisyon, ambisyon. Ako po'y tinawagan ni Senator Loren at sinabihan na, mag-ambisyon ka maging Senate President. Okay, so for 22 months, I endeavored to uphold my vision of a Philippine society which is just and fair, which saves and shares scientific, peaceful, educated, healthy, democratic, and which is most of all happy and free with overflowing love of God and country. So passing a law is a collective effort. So together, all of us during my time as Senate President, we sheperded, we started, and our passed landmark measures: free tuition, free irrigation, the wage increases for public servants, the doubling of the base pay of military and uniform personnel, free public Wi-Fi, and extended the validity of passports and driver's licenses care of Santo Grayspo, the Bangsa More Organic Act, MiG Sayuto, which is the effort of MiG Subiri, the universal access to quality tertiary education, the train law, especially that aspect which lowered personal income tax rates, the ease of doing business, Mental Health Act, to name a few. I would also like to thank all of you for helping me pass and/or for designating me to be the sponsor or cosponsor of many other laws involving creation of courts, the NBI Modernization Act, the Estate Tax Amnesty Law, the Retail Trade Liberalization Amendments, the creation of the Department of migrant workers, Sayuto, Joelle. the Creatives Industries Development Act and the Centenarians Act, both laws with the help of IMI, the Government Procurement Reform Act, the Archipelagic Sea Lanes Act with the help of TOL, among others. One of the great privileges of serving in this chamber has been meeting and learning from some of the finest minds in our country's political and legislative history. I am grateful to have learned from their wisdom and of course from your wisdom, my dear colleagues, and your wit and your statesmanship. My time as Minority Leader, my time as Minority Leader has been most fulfilling too. I have learned a lot having been forced to read almost all of your bills. Pero hindi kaya. Yeah, I said almost all. So I thank my compatriot in the minority of two, Senator Risa Ontiveros, for electing me as the Minority Leader. Ganong kasimple 'yung aming eleksyon actually, Mr. President. So iwan ko na lang po sa inyo bilang pakiusap ko ang mga panukalang batas na nafile ko na sumasalamin sa aking mga personal na advocasia kabilang dito ang pagtatag ng ospital para sa mga senior citizens. Nasa si Senator Bongo, sana pansinin naman niya ito. Ang modernasasyon ng Philippine Orthopedic Hospital, ito, pag-isipan niyo po ito na mabuti, ang pagbuwag ng travel tax because, I mean, nasa konstituzyon kasi that we have the right to travel so we do not tax a right. At ang integrasyon ng computer programming sa basic education curriculum. Sinusulong ko rin na reforma sa People's Initiative and Referendum Act, pakitingin na lang po. And also I filed some measures designed to discourage negligence and recklessness, 'yung tinatawag na mga quasi-offenses sa dami na mga aksidente na mga bus, mga heavy vehicles leading to injuries as well as loss of lives. Pag-aralan po natin ito. Marami akong lessons learned. For example, san marami, sana ako nagkamali, paano niyo kami nautakan? Yes, paano na, paano nautakan ng majority ay minority? Tapos, actually, may pagkakamali kami na, present kami dalawa. Kung absent 'yung isa, meron sana kami parliamentary maneuver na nagawa. Pero hindi ko na muna idetalye, ikwento lahat ito kasi ang balak ko isulat ito sa isang libro para naman meron pang bumili ng libro ko. So I owe this journey to many. Hindi ko po ito narating na mag-isa. So to my colleagues, all of you, so I have, if I look around, I think I've spent enough time in this chamber and I've been so, siguro so involved in your professional lives that I have, I think I have personal relationships with all of you. Actually, with all of you. Ito nga, ito si Bongo, si Robin. May kaso pa nga kami. We are fighting, we are fighting over a political party. And because, and because of that, because of that, I have been forced to look for another political party. So party mates ko na si Tita Cynthia, Amy Marcos, Mark Villar, Piya Kayetano. So I really have, I believe I have personal relationships with all of you. So I want to thank all of you. The Senate is not a place for echo chambers but for courageous discourse. In diversity, we find democracies heartbeat. Salamat for debating with me. I learned a lot from using my kokote and I believe this is also an anti-Alzheimer's measure. So, so maraming salamat tumuli sa inyo lahat pero siguro kung meron man nasaktan sa 13 years ko rito sa senado kasi syempre na-involved din tayo sa some highly political issues eh. Kung meron namang pong, kung meron pong nasaktan sa aking mga kilos, nasabi, actions, or nafile, I beg for your understanding and I pray that with the passage of time you will find it in your heart to forgive me. So ganun, so ganun lang po, if ever lang, if ever. Okay, so I'm assuming meron kasi lahat tayo dito ano eh, sensitive eh. Karamihan sa atin rito sensitive. So basa ulitin ko to my dear colleagues, I really thank you, no? You have been all, you have been all very kind to me. You have been all very good to me and you have been all, i-all ko na lang para wala ng, para hindi na natin isipin you have been all very generous to me. To the Senate Secretariat and staff, the USAA, even our cleaning staff, thank you for keeping this institution alive day in and day out. Your work, often unseen, ensures that the Senate remains a bastion of democracy. Lahat po tayo may ambag to making the Senate a bastion of democracy. So to my own staff, san ang staff ko? May kanlito konti, okay? Thank you for making me more efficient by multiplying the number of my mini-mis. Yan sila. So I hope meron po kayo, na, I hope meron kayong natutunan sa time ninyo sa akin and congratulations to all of my staff who have been hired by incoming senators. So to my family, Kat is here. Kat, my, my wife, she is the, she is the, she is the Commander in Chief I mentioned earlier. My mother, si Nanay Bing, of course my siblings and my classmates and my close friends. Your faith in me has been my anchor. Public service demands long hours and personal sacrifice. Thank you for your prayers, understanding, and actual support. To the people of the Philippines, you entrusted me not only with votes but with your hopes. I hope my service has honored that trust. Though I leave this chamber, I remain your public servant in my capacity as a lawyer and as a concerned and involved citizen, advocating for federalism and faster local development, for a just and fair society, and for preferential for a just and fair society, and for preferential focus on the poor. I also leave you with one wish: may the laws you pass rescue the poor and helpless and deliver them from the grasp of evil people, as it is written in Psalm 82:4. I leave carrying with me the lessons from this chamber, the friendships I have made, and the love I have deepened for this country. Public office is borrowed time, and my time here, though ending, will always remain a chapter I will cherish. It has been the honor of my life to serve you as Senator of the Republic of the Philippines. Maraming, maraming salamat po sa sambayan ng Pilipinas.
Thank you, Senator Pimentel, duly noted and entered into the records. Session is suspended. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1373.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of the aforementioned resolution is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution commending the Honorable Francis Toll and Tolentino, Chairperson of the Committee on Rules and Majority Leader for his exemplary leadership during the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines and his invaluable service to the nation and the Filipino people.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1373.
Any objection? Hearing none. Resolution Number 1373 is hereby adopted. And the entire text of the resolution is hereby in order to be inserted into the records.
Yes, Mr. President, unfortunately, our honorary is indisposed right now, but he asked this representation to just thank the Senate staff, everybody from the Secretariat, the pages, elevator, everybody, USAA, and all the employees of the Senate who one or the other has worked with. And likewise, if I may read, Mr. President.
The Majority Leader may proceed.
If I may read a prayer from Senator Tolentino, our Majority Leader. I pray to God that the Philippine Senate will continue to be a bastion of democracy, steadfast in upholding the rule of law, protecting the rights of our people, and advancing the principles of justice and freedom for generations to come. So that's from our Majority Leader, Senator Francis Toll-Tolentino.
Duly noted, thank you, and entered into the records. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1372.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senate Secretary is directed to comply and to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution commending Senate President Pro Tempore, the Honorable Jingo Estrada, for his dedicated service to the Senate and the nation during the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that to adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1372.
Any objection? Hearing none. Resolution Number 1372 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we recognize our honorary. Of course, it's an honor for me to move and to recognize his presence. Ang anak lamasa, my kuya, Senator Jingo Estrada.
Senator Kuya Jingo Estrada is recognized. You may proceed.
Thank you to my beloved younger brother, the good one. I am truly honored and at the same time deeply humbled by the gesture of the Senate Leadership. In particular, Senate President Chees Scudero authored proposed Senate Resolution Number 1372 commending this representation. Papasalamat ako hindi lang sa mayoria, kundi pati na rin sa minority, sa pagkakataon manilbihan bilangan 'yung Senate President Pro Temp para sa third regular session ng 19th Congress. It is an honor to serve as this chamber's Senate President Pro Temp for a number of times already, the 14th, 15th, and presently in the 19th Congress. To be recognized by my fellow legislators whom I hold in highest regard is something that I will always treasure. Iba-iba man ang ating pinanggaling partido at pananindigan sa mga issue, pinatutunayan ang Sinado ito, at tayo ay nakaka-isa para sa layunin na mayangat ang antas ng pamumuhay ng ating mga kabobayan. And lastly, I share this commendation to all those who stood by me for their unwavering support and encouragement throughout this journey. Maraming, maraming salamat po, ganong pangulo.
Session is suspended.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1382.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution 1382 is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the resolution.
Resolution declaring as read and approved the journal of the 56th session of the Senate.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1382.
Any objection? There being none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 1382 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed... Senate Resolution Number 1383.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Consideration of proposed Senate Resolution Number 1383 is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the production and distribution of 20 printed and 100 digital copies of the Journal and Record of the Senate for the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines.
Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1383.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 1383 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 27.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number, rather, Consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 27 is now in order. The Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Concurrent Resolution Providing for the Adjournment Scene in Day of the Third Regular Session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines not later than 12 o'clock midnight today, Wednesday, June 11, 2025.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 27.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 27 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, in conformity with the Senate Concurrent Resolution we have just adopted, I move that we, that the committee of the Senate, as provided therein, be composed of Senators Joel Villanueva, Alan Peter Kayetano, and Ronald Batoh de la Rosa.
Any objection? Hearing none. The aforementioned senators are so designated. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I believe that some of our colleagues who lead terms as we near the end of the 19th Congress, they are Senators Cynthia Villar, Grayspo, Ramon Bongrevilla Jr., Maria Lourdes, Nancy Binay, the Minority Leader, Senator Aklinokok Mentelet, and Senator Francis Toll-Tolentino.
Session is suspended.
Mr. President, I withdraw the previous motion.
So withdrawn.
We are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provision of Senate Bill Number 3000 and House Bill Number 10270, the Bills Institutionalizing the Career Progression System for Public School Teachers and School Leaders and Appropriating Funds Therefore. With that, I move to recognize the Chairperson of the Senate Panel, Senator Win Gachaljan, to give the highlights of the Conference Committee Report. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Gachaljan is recognized. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, as the lead confere of the Senate Panel, I have the honor of submitting for ratification a copy of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 3000 and House Bill Number 10270, otherwise known as the Career Progression System for Public School Teachers and School Leaders Act. The Senate and the House Panels have met and discussed every possible way to work out a reconciled version of our respective bills. Through this proposed measure, we seek to institutionalize the career progression system for public school teachers and school leaders, aiming to promote their professional development and career advancement. It provides a structured pathway for career growth, whether in teaching or school administration, anchored on merit, competence, and professional standards. To expand advancement opportunities, the Department of Budget and Management is mandated to create new position titles for Teacher 4, Teacher 5, Teacher 6, Teacher 7, Master Teacher 5, Master Teacher 6, School Principal 5, and include the same in the Index of Occupation Services, Occupational Groups, Classes, and Salary Grades. Equally important, the bill aligns salaries and benefits across teaching and school administration career lines. Under this proposed measure, a Master Teacher 2 will now have the same salaries, benefits, and other privileges as a School Principal 1. A Master Teacher 3 will be equal to School Principal 2, and Master Teacher 4 to School Principal 3, and Master Teacher 5 to School Principal 4, and Master Teacher 6 to School Principal 5. And to ensure inclusivity, the bill also mandates free support programs for those who may not initially meet the assessment standards, reaffirming that no teacher or school leader will be left behind. Mr. President, these are just among the salient features of the proposed measure. Sa kabuan, ang panukalang ito ahigit pa sa reforma at struktura. Isa itong pagkilala na matagal nang hinihintay ng ating public school teachers and school leaders, na sa bawat pagsusumikap nila, nararapat lamang na may malinaw na landas na pag-unlad. At this juncture, allow me to extend my gratitude to the co-authors of this measure, Senate President Pro Tempore, Jingo Estrada, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator Grayspo, Senator Bongrevilla Jr., Senator Joel Villanueva, Senator Mark Villar, and Senator Alan Peter Kayetano. Their unwavering dedication and advocacy for this piece of legislation were the driving forces that brought us to this pivotal moment. To my fellow confere, Senate President Pro Tempore, Jingo Estrada, Senate Minority Leader, Coco Pimentel, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator Bongrevilla, thank you for your invaluable contributions during the pre-Bi-Cameral Conference Committee meetings as we resolved several issues. I also thank Minority Leader Coco Pimentel for his contributions in refining the bill during the period of interpolation and amendment. Mr. President, the comprehensive details of the disagreeing provisions are reflected in the joint explanatory statement. With the permission of body, I move that the said joint explanatory statement on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 3000 and House Bill Number 10270 be read in total into the record and that the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report be ratified. Thank you, Mr. President, esteemed colleagues.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 3000 and House Bill Number 10270 is hereby approved and ratified. Congratulations to the author and sponsor. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we proceed to additional reference of business.
Any objection? Hearing none. Secretary is directed to comply.
Additional reference of business, bills in first reading, Senate Number 3006, An Accretion of Third Commission Education, EdCom 3, Strengthening and Continuing the Mandate of EdCom 2 to Address the National Education Crisis, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes, by Senators Kayetano EP, Kayetano P, Escudero, and Villanueva.
To the Committees on Basic Education, Higher Technical and Vocational Education, and Finance.
Senate Number 3007, A Act Establishing an Executive Legislative Labor Commission to Identify Key Challenges in the Labor Sector, Proposed Solutions for the Establishment of a Nationwide Framework for Living Wage, and Institutionalize a National Labor Roadmap, by Senators Kayetano EP, Kayetano P, and Escudero.
To the Committees on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development, and Finance. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, the Minority Leader has previously inquired on the status of the proposed amendment to our rules with respect to motopropio inquiries conducted by our committees. The Senate President was prepared to make a ruling, but upon the Minority Leader's suggestion, we deferred the ruling so that we can discuss it among ourselves with the more members that are present on the floor. May we hear the ruling of the Senate President?
The ruling of the Chair. When Section 2 of the Rules of Procedure speaks of an inquiry initiated by a committee, it refers to the committee's decision reached by majority of its members, not just its chairperson. The power to conduct a motopropio inquiry finds basis under Section 2 of our Rules of Procedure governing inquiries in native legislation, which states that inquiries may be initiated by the committees on matters within its competence. Section 2, quote, "Initiation of Inquiry." Inquiries may be initiated by the Senate or any of its committees if the matter is when is within its competence or upon petition filed or upon information given by any senator or by any person, not a member thereof. Thus, a decision or an action of the committee requires the approval of the majority of its members. The body is reminded that only the blue ribbon committee...
El cuerpo se recuerda que solo el comité azul tiene el derecho inherente de iniciar inquisiciones en aid of legislation bajo la sección 13b2 de las reglas del Senado, que especificamente proporciona que el comité y la responsabilidad de los oficiales públicos y las investigaciones tienen la jurisdicción de investigar, cita: "cualquier asunto de interés público en su propia iniciativa o traído a su atención por cualquier otro... por cualquier miembro del Senado". Así es la rulita del presidente sobre el asunto presentado por el líder minoritario, que fue antes discutido y accedido por el líder minoritario. Señor presidente.
Sí, señor presidente. Después de las resoluciones que pasamos anteriormente honrando a nuestros colegas, algunos de nuestros colegas querrían dar un tributo a través de cortas manifestaciones. Primero, señor presidente, me movo a que el senador Joel Villanueva sea reconocido.
Senador Villanueva está reconocido. Pueden seguir, señor.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Gracias, señor presidente. Dime que dar honor a quien tiene honor. Y como uno de los que se olvidan de todos los senadores que oyen a este escenario, queremos decir que cuando cerramos este capítulo del 19 Congreso, permítanme levantarme en honor a nuestros colegas que pronto tomarán su último abrazo en esta sala. Nuestros amados compañeros de asiento, nuestros colegas defensores, nuestros amigos. Señor presidente, mientras adoramos a algunos de nuestros colegas legisladores, tomaremos este momento primero para honrar y celebrar a estos servidores públicos por su contribución a esta institución y su compromiso con fortalecer nuestra república. Hablamos de mi compañero de asiento, mi compañero senador Nancy Binay, nuestro líder minoritario, el ex presidente del Senado, mi hermano senador Coco Pimentel, nuestra increíble gracia del Senado, senador Grace Poe, senador Ramon Bong Revilla Jr., el ídolo de la ciudad, senador Francis Tolentino y nuestra mamá, la principal del Senado, senador Cynthia Villar. Hay un dicho en el libro de los profanos, señor presidente, que nos recuerda a todos, y cito: "La memoria del justo es una bendición", cita. Hoy nos bendecen esta institución y nuestro país recordando el servicio, las contribuciones y los legados de nuestros colegas que están cumpliendo su plazo. Permítanme, señor presidente, comenzar con alguien más cercano a mí, tanto en asiento como en humor. Mi compañero de asiento es este y la madre de la familia del senador no es otro que el senador Nancy Binay. Aunt Nancy, gracias por traer fuerza y liderazgo quietos y estrechos a nuestro trabajo. Has championado la salud mental, la educación inclusiva, el plazo de maternity y la protección ambiental con calma persistencia y gracia, incluso cuando usted fue llamado ayer como Nancy Reno. Señor presidente, si hay senadores que van a graduarse aquí, el senador Nancy es el número uno oyente de esta representación. Sabemos todo lo que dice la señora Nancy. Nos ha dado las maneras de responder, pero a pesar de todo, más queremos estar con el senador Nancy porque sabe todas las historias de detrás de la escena. Su victoria reciente en Makati es prueba de que tú eres la prueba de la confianza de tus ciudadanos. Es prueba del confianza que has ganado a través de tu carácter y competencia. Cuando entraste en tu nuevo rol como mayor, estamos seguros de que lideras con la misma empatía y resolución. El pueblo de Makati está en manos excelentes. Viva y continúe haciéndote cargo y apoyo para los ciudadanos Makatis, senadora y mayor Nancy Binay. A nuestro líder minoritario del Senado, nuestro ex presidente del Senado, senador Coco Pimentel, ídolo, has llevado la torre de la disimilación principal con claridad y convicción. Y todo esto es porque has utilizado excelente tu coquete. Su liderazgo en la minoría nos recordó... nos recordó... nos recordó a todos que el progreso no es solo sobre números, sino sobre principios, sobre levantarse incluso si tienes que hacerlo solo. Tengo muchas historias para ti, senador Coco, pero no me voy a olvidar de la historia porque sabemos que somos iguales que cuando se derrumban o beben agua, se derrumban. No es número uno, señor presidente, sino número dos. Y un día, estaba con nosotros mientras decía el ex jefe Rodrigo Duterte en Soná, y en el palo de su paloma, nos preguntaban quién era el primero que nos daba. Y yo me agarré a mi jefe porque aún no terminaba de la zona, y se derrumbó el senador Coco para derrumbarse. Ocurrió esto cuando estábamos en París, señor presidente. Y hay muchas historias que no me voy a olvidar. No solo es genial, en verdad, a veces se siente el broma. Señor presidente, si creía que el senador Coco nos perdía, solo tenía que ver que nos perdía más, sobre todo la buena caricia. Senador Coco, gracias por siempre recordarnos que una democracia saludable necesita una oposición fuerte, racional y constructiva. Deberías haber moldeado el grado y el calibre de debates presentados en esta sala. Y yo soy uno de los verdaderos de sus interpelaciones. Esperamos involucrarnos en un discurso significativo con usted en el futuro, tal vez no por estar detrás del palo del Senado, sino como colegas anteriores y, lo más importante, como hermanos en cristo y como buen amigo. Y a nuestra increíble gracia aquí en el Senado, senador Grace Poe, estar con usted ha sido un verdadero honor. Estuvimos juntos en medidas que ampliaron el acceso a las oportunidades digitales y económicas críticas, desde la Ley de Registración SIM, la establecimiento de la ciudad del aeropuerto Bulacan, la zona económica especial. Muchas gracias, senador Grace, aunt Grace, por caminar las leyes que modernizaron la forma en que los Filipinos viven, se mueven y conectan. Es un privilegio unirme a usted como coautor y cosponsor de medidas que crearan oportunidades a largo plazo, especialmente para nuestros ciudadanos en las provincias. No me voy a olvidar, y no me voy a olvidar cuando te visitaste con nosotros en Bulacan, junto con el senador JV, senador Nancy, senador Mig, senador Sunny Angara, y nos encontramos en la estrecha isla de San Rafael. Y debido a la fuerza del aliento, nos atrapaste, y tú eres el que se fue. Y debido a la fuerza del aliento, tú eres el que se fue. Todos estamos hundidos. Y lo mejor de allí, sin ropa, es el senador Grace Poe. Entonces, allí verás cuánto eres un cobrón y que con suerte estás con el senador Grace. Senador Grace Poe, hasta ahora... Senador Grace, hasta ahora, espero que veas y busques películas. Veo la película que te gusta, "Totoy Batos". A senador Bong Revilla, ídolo, pobre del senado, muy grande, muchos son los que se quedan sin nada y se odian, sobre todo la ciudad porque somos muy guapos en el senado. Sin embargo, muchas gracias a ustedes, ídolo, por su dedicación al trabajo de los estudiantes y maestros. Recuerdo las reuniones de comité, nos sentamos hasta aquí en el plenario, sobre todo al impulsar la Ley de prohibición de no permiso, examen, la nueva ley de pasaporte en Filipinas y, por supuesto, la ley de la educación. Una ley muy cerca de mi corazón. También trabajamos mano a mano, senador Bong, para la creación de trabajo a través de la Ley de trabajo para la ciudad. Y nuevamente, no me voy a olvidar de la sanción. Y es evidente que les damos las gracias a ustedes, a los maestros, estudiantes y trabajadores. Su esfuerzo como senador del 19 Congreso ahora estará grabado en una de las historias increíbles de CAPS. Entonces, le damos la mano a ustedes para la ciudad y me perdigo a mis misgos y a tu siempre regalo de frutas que vienes de tus campos y de tu educación para que yo sea un gran agricultor. A nuestros amigos senador Francis Tolentino, si hay un aprendiz de vida certificado aquí en el senado, no es otro que el senador Tolentino y es evidente que tiene tres licencias de maestro de leyes. Su trabajo, senador Tolentino, en las zonas marítimas y la protección de nuestra integridad arquitectónica refleja una profunda comprensión de nuestra soberanía nacional y un compromiso por el protegerla. Es evidente que tiene su maestría, mi jefe, en las mapas de Filipinas que le han traído aquí al plenario. Y cuando le enseña, recuerdo a los maestros que eran molestos cuando yo estaba enseñando. Y creo que la ley de atracción de Tolentino funcionó debido a que el Google Maps agregó la playa del sur de Filipinas. Nuestras defensas interseptaron en asegurar que nuestro pueblo, especialmente los barcos y pescadores marinos, no se dejaran atrás en las conversaciones nacionales. De nuevo, muchas gracias a usted, senador Tolentino, por su ayuda en la ciudad. Finalmente, pero no menos importante, finalmente, ¿cómo puedo olvidar mi niña, senador Cynthia Villar? Mi niña favorita en el casal. ¿Por qué nos veréis como dos, colegas distintas, senadores Cynthia? ¿Se acuerdan de ella? No lo hago porque allí. No me voy a preocupar que quizá no soy capaz de ayudarles, niña. Debido a que estoy aquí, mis compañeros, Mark y Camille, no hay problema. Les agradezco, mamá, por su trabajo sin parar en la agricultura, sectores ambientales. Niña, te he enseñado mucho. En cuanto a mi apoyo, a su atención en los dos comités, incluso si se puede hacer algo, y cuándo puede salir. Y recuerdo que cuando recibí una gran cantidad de agua mientras no se derrumban mucho sus ojos, dijiste que mi inágeno es muy bueno y que lo guardo bien. Está en el registro del senado. Y me voy a morir, mi jefe, cuando hay algo que se hace o se piensa, que tiene intención de borrarlo en los registros del Senado. Senador Villar, has sido un defensor confiable de nuestros agricultores y pescadores. Has hecho un buen trabajo como personal del comité del Senado en agricultura, reforma agrícola y medioambiente, recursos naturales y cambio climático. Niña, no te olvides de darle vuelta a tus farms... a tus farms. Para hablar... Hablarán los que te guardan bien. Saben, mi jefe, tengo muchas historias de mamá, de Nina Cynthia, pero lo que no me voy a olvidar siempre es que cuando tienes un mal, aquí en el senado, cuando comes, te da la sensación de que puedes comer o te da la sensación de que puedes comer de las tabas en el lounge, te dicen: ¡Hoy, hoy! ¡No te lo permitan! ¡Hoy, hoy! Bebe tu botella. Para ser verdad, la madre de la casa, la mamá, aquí en el senado, entonces, no estamos muy lejos del senador Mark y del senador Camille. Compartimos un terreno común en caminar medidas de lugar marcante como la Ley de emancipación agrícola nueva, la Ley de desarrollo de la industria de la sal en Filipinas y la Ley de la sabotaje económicamente antiagricultural. Todo es crucial para proteger nuestra seguridad alimentaria y promover el desarrollo rural. Senador Cynthia Villar, muchas gracias también por apoyar nuestros esfuerzos en la educación con nuestra... con su autoridad del marco de educación y entrenamiento basado en la empresa. Su legado, niña, no está solo en las leyes que pasamos, sino en todos los agricultores y empresarios empoderados por ellos. Señor presidente, déjame terminar diciendo que a menudo se refiere al Senado como un organismo deliberativo, pero más allá de los debates y votos, es una comunidad de servidores públicos, personas llamadas a servir, elegidas para liderar y recordadas por cómo hicieron una diferencia. A nuestros colegas externos, muchas gracias. Gracias por servir al pueblo Filipino y compartir este viaje con nosotros. Gracias por las amistades, por las leyes que construimos juntos y por los valores por los que se mantuvo. Su legado vive no solo en las páginas del periódico o el texto de las leyes, sino en los discursos que entregaron o insertados en los registros, sino en las vidas cambiadas, los futuros abiertos, el bien que has hecho con tranquilidad, fe y relentlessly. Déjame terminar citando Joshua, capítulo 1, versículo 9. Dice: "Amigos, sean fuertes y corajosos. No sepan temer y no sepan odiar. Porque el Señor, tu Dios, es tu..." "El Señor, tu Dios, está contigo dondequiera que vayas. Que sepan aferrarse al Señor sabiendo que él es tu guía, él es tu fuerza, fuente de fuerza y fuente de paz". Muchas gracias. Viva. Y que Dios continúe bendeciendo el trabajo de tus manos dondequiera que se llame. Vive el senado republicano de Filipinas.
Gracias, senador Villanueva. Señor presidente.
Sí, señor presidente. La siguiente que dará un tributo y manifestación es nuestra代表的主席 senador Intevarez. Me movo a que se reconozca.
Senador Intevarez está reconocido. Pueden seguir, señor.
Gracias, señor presidente. Señor presidente, agradecidos colegas, juntos con senador Cynthia, senador Grace, senador Bong Revilla, senador Nancy, líder minoritario Francis, hoy levanto con un corazón agradecido para honrar a un amigo de mucho tiempo, un colega y el líder principal, senador Aquilino Coco Pimentel III, quien al final de este Congreso concluye su plazo como líder minoritario. Ha sido uno de los más dignos de mi vida hasta ahora servir en la minoría del Senado junto al senador Coco. Juntos, nos manteníamos en línea durante algunos de los momentos más críticos de nuestra historia legislativa y a través de todo ello, él lideró con calma, resolución, brillante acúmeno legal y fidelidad insoportable a la Constitución. El senador Coco trajo incisividad y distinción al rol de fiscalizador. Preguntó las preguntas difíciles cuando otros eligieron silencio, ya sea scrutinizando el presupuesto nacional con precisión o con la elevación de dudas constitucionales sobre el paso del fondo de inversión Maharlika. Nos recordó que la lealtad al pueblo y a la ley debe siempre tratar la expediencia política. Y justo anoche, nos acercamos a la testosterona de otro momento definidor de este Senado, el final de la liderazgo firme del senador Coco, cuando esta sala finalmente actuó en la demanda de impeachment contra el vicepresidente. Fue el senador Coco quien se mantuvo firme recordando al Senado su deber constitucional. Mientras que la minoría y otros colegas no lograron prevenir la demanda a la Casa de impeachment, los registros demuestran que cuando la historia golpeó la puerta del Senado, él no se desvió. Él contestó con coraje y claridad. En todo esto, veo el legado de su padre, el viejo presidente del Senado, Aquilino Nene Pimentel Jr., un patriota que en 2001 eligió resignarse en lugar de ser complicado en la negación de abrir un pedazo de evidencia en otro juicio de impeachment. El senador Coco ha llevado esa torre de integridad hacia adelante sin miedo, con fe y humildad. A usted, senador Coco, salamat kaayo. Gracias por ser una voz de principio en el ruido. Gracias por ser un compañero paciente pero firme y líder en la minoría. Gracias por recordarnos que la fuerza de nuestra democracia no está en los números, como dijo uno de nuestros colegas que habló anteriormente, sino en la claridad ética. El Senado simplemente no será el mismo sin usted. Pero no tengo duda de que donde sea su camino siguiente continuará siendo un servidor del pueblo y un cuidador de nuestra democracia. of the people and a steward of our democracy. Mabuhay ka Senator Coco. Padayon at maraming maraming salamat. Salamat Mr. President.
Noted and entered into the records. Thank you Senator Andiveros, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, next to give his manifestation and tribute is Senator Mark Villar. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Mark Villar is recognized, you may proceed sir.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to rise to of course, give my thanks to all those graduating colleagues. As a neophyte senator, I've learned so much from you, and it's been an honor to serve with all of you, Senator Nancy, Senator Nancy Binay, Senator Bong Revilia, Senator Francis Tolentino, Senator Grace Po, Senator Coco Pimentel. I wish we could have served longer. I've learned so much, and if I had another three years, I would be much richer for it if we were able to spend together. But you consider me as a friend, and you'll always have my support and my admiration. Thank you. And of course, I'd like to also give a special tribute to my, of course, my mother, and I'm standing here today. I would be remiss if I did not say a few words for my mother. Alam ko naman na siya po 'yung mother bear ng Senado, but she is my mother. For me, she is mama. And she's been a significant part of the upper chamber since she first took office in 2013. For more than a decade, she's been a pillar of the Senate, advancing cross-sectional interests for the development of the Filipino nation. Senator Cynthia, or I call her mama, has chaired the Senate Committee on Agriculture and Food and the Senate Committee on Environment and Natural Resources since 2013 and until now. Besides pursuing and enacting relevant laws, she also led numerous initiatives to empower farmers, among which is the establishment of TESDA accredited farm schools, which have so far reached over 2,367 all over the country. Through her work, she has made possible various programs and advocacies that uplifted the conditions of farmers and fisherfolk. My mother has worked her way through her years here at the Senate, brick by brick, building up the foundation of opportunities that continuously bolster the conditions of Filipinos till this day. Being known as Mrs. Hanek Buhey, she has also pioneered programs and activities in our beloved Las Pinias for struggling constituents who are in need in terms of securing support to jumpstart their livelihoods. To this day, her initiatives have benefited thousands of Las Pineros and Filipinos from across the country. And I'd just like to say I'm very honored to share the wisdom of my mother to the Filipino people. And if I can share with everyone the passion, I admire her passion for her work, especially in agriculture. Linggo linggo po, yun ang topic namin sa aming mga lunch, sa aming mga family lunch, at marami po akong natutunan sa mga lunches namin tungkol sa agrikultura. And I can say that I am an expert just by listening to my mother and her opinions about how to improve our agriculture. And I can say that the moves, the legislation that she has done in this chamber will reverberate through many generations of Filipinos. And for that, I have the highest respect, and I think to be able to serve in this chamber with your mother is a very unique honor. I think Senator Jingo knows the feeling siguro dahil kasama mo rin ang mother mo sa Senate, but it's a very unique, yes, it's a very unique experience. And I'd just like to say that, Mama, it's been an honor for me to serve here for the past three years. I learned so much from you, and I hope it's my ambition that I can have the same effect in terms of legislation that you have made in this chamber. So I will always follow your lead, and with what I've learned from you, I'll carry on your legacy here in the Senate. So thank you Mama for always supporting me, and you deserve, you have all my respect and all my love and all my admiration. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you Senator Mark Villar, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, Senators Rafi Tulfo, Batud de la Rosa, and Bongo would like their manifestations be inserted to records.
Duly noted and so ordered, Majority Leader.
And also our Senate President Pro Tempore.
Duly noted and entered to the records.
Last to make a manifestation is Senator Pia Queitano, I move that she be recognized.
Senator Pia Queitano is recognized, you may proceed ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of the words I have prepared for our colleagues have already been mentioned by our other colleagues because obviously we have all been together, so to a large extent we have similar experiences with our colleagues. But I'm gonna just mention a few, and I will also insert my entire manifestation into the record. So for Senator Toll, as I think it's Senator Joel who aptly mentioned that we call him the professor, mas nerd ako sa'yo, so I appreciated it more. Lumalabas pa ako para makinig kasi minsan wala na sa inyong nakikinig, so nakatuto ko doon na nakikinig. But I think, I don't know which title goes best, na the professor or that he forgets he's the Majority Leader, because as people who work in the Senate know, the job of the Majority Leader is to move along, the deliberations. And when the Senate President assures me now, "Kan na mag-alala, hindi na magtatanim to, isa na lang tatanim ito, magtatanim ang Majority Leader," who has experienced that, itas po ang inyong kamay. Okay, we love you Toll, pero, we love you. To Senator Coco, sabi mo nga, you're an introvert, you are a nerd, we know that. And I think nakatulong naman kami, no? I'm also an introvert, so I think nakatulong naman kami to bring out the best of you. Nawala na 'yung asawa mo, sasabihin ko sanang pasalamat ka naman sa amin, kasi nakatulong naman yata kami sa iyong people skills, no? But it has been an honor to be a part of the senators who made sure that you will be here in the Senate with us. I truly enjoyed a lot of our debates. I tell my kids that I geek out on the legal work that we have been trained to do, and you are one of those who have really, aside from of course your father, my seatmate, the father of our colleague Senator Sani Angara, Senator Miriam, but you are worthy of the name Pimentel because your father was my seatmate, and many times you and I, because my wonderful brother, our wonderful Senate President, as Senator Grace has said, are sometimes unicorns. So tayong naiiwan mga senator, tayong naiiwan mga senator lawyers na tinatry natin mapaayos ang ating crafting of lost, and in fairness, to always make it easy for the people to understand. So I thank you for that, I thank you for that. Senator Mayor Nancy Binay, I join our colleagues in saying that behind that quiet demeanor is a lot of strength and sincerity, and a lot of hours that you have put in in attending all of these hearings. I would sometimes come during budget hearings, and we all come at different times, and you always updated me on the most, in fairness, hindi 'yung chica 'yung ikukwento ko, she would always update me on very controversial issues that required three hours of hearing, pero 10 minutes or 1 minute worthy, worth lang ang laman nun, tas she would update me on that. And I always was in awe that you had the patience to sit through those hearings and then concise three hours in 30 seconds for me. So thank you for that. We've shared many common advocacies, and I think just a few days ago, I delivered the bicameral, what do you call that, report, and I mentioned that we made sure, the bicameral report on the virology institute, and we made sure that the role of our ITM is secure there, because that is something that you and I fought against, we fought against, the creation of a virology institute that would eradicate our ITM from, as an institution, and we wanted to make sure it stayed, and we did that successfully. I wish you all the best, and I mentioned to your husband that perhaps he and my brother Senator Allen can create a Senate-spousal committee for the, not just cordial, but best relationship that Makati and Taguig can ever have. To Senator Grace Po, I'm also grateful for the many years of partnership on many issues, the last of which during the term that she chaired the Committee on Finance, and I was the vice chair, we worked together on many health, education, women and children's issues. I am proud to ensure that a foundling was considered a Filipino senator. I am proud that we have been able to work together on many legislation that are protecting the most vulnerable, and who else would not be as vulnerable as a child that is born either without known parents or with known parents who leave them behind. So thank you also for the inspiration. And we leave on, from foundling, we go to animal welfare, and I promise to keep up the work that you have started, and I wish you also all the best. To Senator Bong, my kabatche, we have been together for, since 2004, many years. I'd like to say, mas mukha pa naman akong bata kaysa sa'yo. I would, I, part of my, I'm sometimes introduced as the youngest ever elected female senator, it would be the youngest ever elected senator if not for Bong, who is six months younger than me, kaya female senator, the youngest, is no other than my batchmate Senator Bong Revilia. It is true what so many of us have said, he always comes with a light heart, with good words for all of us, and we only hope and pray that you continue to share this brightness with everyone. Thank you for the very meaningful legislation that you passed in the last few years. And to Tita Cynthia, Tita Cynthia, I had so many interesting stories, pero parang mas bagay siya off the record na lang, off the record na lang, doon na lang sa group chat, abangan niyo, abangan niyo. A lot of them include Senator Sani Angara also, a lot of them kasi was during our last campaign together, so off the record na lang yun, pero suffice it to say that, wala na si Mark, Mark, you have a very interesting mother, who has also become a mother to all of us. And truly, truly admirable, Tita Cynthia, your passion, for your passion conviction, for the environment, for the farmers, conservation, and for that, you have always been inspiration to us. Finally, I just want to acknowledge the leadership of our Senate President Jesus Cudero. Thank you so much for shepherding us through, many people don't realize the difficult decisions we have to make, and it is because you have a Senate President who makes those tough decisions, who carries the weight of those, the political impact of those decisions, the criticism, and we thank you for that. We thank also Senator Jingo Estrada, our Senate President Pro Temp, for all the support that he has also given the chamber, and to all our leadership, the leadership, combined leadership of everyone here, to the minority group again, Senator Coco, Deputy Minority Leader Senator Riza, and to our Secretariat and all our staff. Maraming maraming salamat po, to all of you, God bless you all. And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you Senator Pia, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, last but not the least, to make our manifestation and tribute is Senator Lauren Legarda, I move that she be recognized.
Senator Legarda is recognized, you may proceed ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with deep respect that I rise to co-sponsor the resolutions before us, honoring our distinguished colleagues for their dedicated service and invaluable contributions to the Senate as they conclude their terms in the 19th Congress. To be elected to serve in this chamber is a great and challenging feat, but to depart with integrity, with dignity, and the legacy that strengthens a republic is a far greater achievement. Much can be said about Senator Grace Po's stellar performance in the Senate, where we have collaborated countless times, yet beyond that, we share a deep history. I admired her father, my running mate Fernando FPJ Jr., and stood by him during the challenging 2004 presidential campaign, when we faced the Filipino people and offered what we could. Needless to state, fate has been kind to us Filipinos, that while we never saw an FPJ presidency, we were blessed with the next best thing in the dedicated service of Senator Grace Po. Thank you for your service, Senator Po. To Senator Cynthia Villar, working alongside you in championing environmental protection has been a privilege. As you conclude your term, I want to personally thank you for standing firm on safeguarding our protected areas and speaking out against activities that threaten our coast and marine life. Your dedication has left a lasting mark on all of us. I wish you continued purpose and success as you take on new journeys beyond the Senate. Senator Bong Revilia, thank you for your years of service in the Senate, and for your support that you've extended to measures we have jointly pursued, promoting environmental protection, disaster resilience, and for the welfare of teachers and education. Your contributions to the work of this chamber have been part of our collective effort to serve the Filipino people. Thank you once again, and may your future work continue to benefit the Filipino. Minority Leader Senator Aquilino Coco Pimentel III, your leadership as minority leader reminds us that a senator's duty goes beyond endorsing measures that we support. It's about ensuring every proposal is rigorously examined against a constitution, laws, sound policy, reason, and purpose. The 19th Congress owes much to the minority's steadfast vigilance. Without your tireless scrutiny and principled challenges, we risk passing laws that fall short of serving the people. Thank you for championing thorough deliberation and upholding the integrity of our legislative process. I wish you continued strength and wisdom in all that you do. Senator Francis Tolentino's contributions to the 19th Congress have been immeasurable, from his tireless leadership of the majority during deliberations, to his steadfast defense of pivotal laws critical to our national territory and security. His dedication has been instrumental in advancing measures that safeguard our sovereignty and benefit the Filipino people. Thank you Senator Toll, we wish you were here, and best wishes as you embark on your next chapter. And to my BFF, seatmate Nancy.
I thank you for our years of, your years of dedicated service as a senator. While we part as colleagues here in the Senate, I'm proud and excited for your next chapter as mayor of Makati. You've always brought a thoughtful and grounded perspective to the Senate, and consistently championed the welfare of women, children, the elderly, families, and your work in tourism, in heritage preservation and culture, and social services, and many more, as well as inclusive policies reflects a deep sense of public duty and integrity. I'm so happy that you will continue to serve the people right in your home in Makati, and I wish you wisdom, courage, and joy in this new role. I agree with Pia that it was not just marites stories, but really much, much more. Sino nang katabiko ng anim na taon na magre-report sa akin araw-araw ng mga pangyayaring hindi ko alam at malalaman, dahil in a way, I'm an introvert, believe it or not, like the minority leader. Anyway, as some of you, my colleagues, close this chapter, may you carry forward the same passion and integrity that marked your service in this chamber. The term of an elective office will end, but the heart of a public servant endures beyond any farewell. My dear colleagues, congratulations, and we wish you well.
Thank you Senator Legarda. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, likewise. Likewise, my manifestation be inserted in records. But quickly, if I may be allowed, Mr. President.
The gentleman may proceed.
Anyway, of course, it's hard to say goodbye to some of our colleagues who have been together for a long time, some of which are my batchmates. But just quickly, just like to, first of all, our minority leader Senator Aquilino Coco Pimentel III, whom I've known since our JCI days around 1995, 96? Naka-shorts pa nga daw ako. But he was one of our officers in our organization. So matagal na 'yung pinagsamahan po namin. And I'm quite, I'm proud to see him really blossom into one of the more diligent senators. You know, we miss Franklin Delano as our minority leader because he really improves our legislations, no? Talagang napakagaling si Senator Franklin Delano. But I'm proud that my compare, my friend, my JCI brother has stepped into the shoes of Franklin Delano quite well, being the minority leader. But I'm very proud of you, proud of how you have shown that what JCI leadership is in our JCI training. So I know that you will be back soon. I'm hoping that the Senate will miss you. But again, I'm proud of what you have done for the institution. To Senator Bong Revilia, wala na siya dito, pero being one of the superstars, pero one of the nicest persons that I have encountered and I met with in the Senate. And thank you for serving and always upholding the interests of the masses. Manin Bong, nandito lang kami. To Mama Bear, Tita Cynthia, Senator Cynthia, of course. Bagamat para siyang principal minsan, but tulad ni Cynthia, marami tayong mga istorya na mas mabuting tayo-tayo nalang mag-usap. Na nakakatuwa, no? Yung kanyang mga remarks. And, but she is really like a mother to us, no? Very caring, no? Kahit na akala natin masugit na para principal, but deep inside, she's like a mother to us. To Senator Nancy, of course, my batchmate, we will truly miss you. You have blossomed also as a legislator. Na talaga dati nga, sabi mo nga, para ka pinagtatawa. You're like a laughingstock, pinagtitripa ng iba. Pero, but you have shown that you are one of the more sensible politicians, one of the more sensible senators around. Lot of common sense, grounded, and we will truly miss you. But I know that, sana, imbittay mo kami sa Makati, bilang inyong bagong mayora. And I'm very proud of what you have done. And she's the walking almanak, no? Pag saan ma kami mag-travel, alam niya lahat. And we will miss you here, but we will visit you in Makati. Sana pakainin mo kami dun. Huwag naman sakantin, sanay kami kay Vice President Binay. Sana naman maglevel up ka na. And of course, my last but not the least, my kinakapatid Senator Grace Poe. I will truly miss you, kapitid. You know, we were not so close before, but when I went, noon nakabalik po ako din sa kongreso, dito sa senado, I have really respected her, one of the brightest, no? Talagang, 'yung amazing grace really fits you well, kapitid. And nakakamistong, Mr. President, kasi 'yung aking mga jokes, nakakatuwan mo hindi. Eh talagang pag humalakak siya, tuwang-tuwa siya kahit ano sabihin ko. Salamat, kapitid. Tuwang-tuwa yun sa lahat. But we will miss you, kapitid Grace, and you have done well. I'm sure that Ninong Ronnie, Ninong Susan, I'm so, I are so proud of you looking down here on us. I'm sure that they are very proud of you there in heaven. Proud na proud po si... I'm sure they are very, very proud of you. With that, Mr. President, we are in receipt of Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2816 and House Bill Number 11287, the bill setting the term of office of barangay officials and Sanguniang Kabataan and for other purposes. With that, I move to recognize the chairperson of the Senate panel, Senator Aimir Marcos, to give the highlights of the Conference Committee Report. Sobob, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Senator Marcos is recognized. You may proceed, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Majority leader, as a result of the bicameral conference on the term of office of barangay officials and members of the Sanguniang Kabataan, I have the honor to submit a copy of the Conference Committee Report with the joint explanation on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 2116, entitled "An Act Setting the Term of Office of Barangay Officials and Members of the Sanguniang Kabataan for Other Purposes" and House Bill Number 11287, entitled "An Act Fixing the Term of Office of Barangay and Sanguniang Kabataan Officials and Changing the Period of Office from Three Years to Six Years," amending for this purpose, Sections 42 and 43 of Republic Act 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991, as amended. After much debate and yes, virtual on-the-mat wrangling, may I share the salient points in its final form? Pasensha po, SKL, share ko lang. Apat na taon, uupo ang ating mga barangay officials para sa termino na hindi hihigit na tatlong beses, in the same position. Ayun. Pakatapos, 'yung mga SK officials iisang termino lamang, in the same position din. Pakatapos, ang nakatakda na susunod na regular barangay and SK elections ay sa unang lunes ng Nobyembre 2026 and every four years thereafter. Dun po tayo nagkasundo, at maraming, maraming salamat. At sa bakas na postponed din, sanay matuloy na nga ang BARM election sa oktubre. Mr. President, I now move that we approve and ratify the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill as stated 2816 and House Bill 11287 on the term of office of barangay officials and the members of the Sanguniang Kabataan. I so move.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2816 and House Bill Number 11287 is hereby approved and ratified. Congratulations to the sponsor and author. Majority leader.
Mr. President, I move that we resume consideration of Committee Report Number 136 on the revenues generated by the government from the Philippine offshore gaming operations or BOGO. Sobob, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Resumption of consideration of Committee Report Number 136 is now in order. Majority leader.
Having sponsored the report and there being no reservation for interpolation nor proposed amendment on the measure, I move that we approve the recommendations in the Committee Report Number 136. Sobob, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Committee Report Number 136 is hereby approved and adopted. Congratulations to this sponsor and author.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 1380.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of Resolution Number 1380 is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution commending Senate President Francis Chez G. Escudero for exemplary leadership and exceptional performance during the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines.
Majority leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 1380.
Any objection? Hearing none. Resolution Number 1380 is hereby adopted. Majority leader.
Mr. President, the chamber is now ready to hear the closing statement from the chair.
Lahat ng panimolang interpolation ni Senator Coco, naiinis ako. Pero pag natapos ha, may punto naman talaga at naging mas matalino ako pagkatapos nun. Malaya na ang staff mo Senator Coco, na makakuwi ng mas maaga mula bukas. Ang babanggitin ko na lamang 'yung mga nandito. Senator Nancy, ikaw dapat ang gumamit ng tagline ni Senator Mark Villar, dahil ikaw sa totoo lang andito sa senado, anti-himik lang. Kaya kasi siguro BFF ni Senator Lauren, ikaw lang ang di nagre-reklamo to 'yung pinapatay niya 'yung ercon.
Kay Senator Bong, mamimisko ang lahat ng ating pag-uusap at usapan sa lounge man o sa plenario, higit at lalo pa kaugnay ng mga payo mo. Kung paano tiyakin na mahal ako at mamahalin ako ng pamilya ko, maraming, maraming salamat. Kay Senator Grace, I think I will miss you the most. Hindi dahil may kailangan ako sa'yo, pero wala nang mangungulit sa'kin. I remember, noon akong pumasok sa senado, payat ka pa nun. Ngayon, mas payat ka na. As Senator JV said earlier, I think your father will be proud of you. I met your dad first before I met you. I met your mom second before I met you. And I think they will both be proud of what you've accomplished and will continue to accomplish beyond your term here in the Senate. Isang bagay na lamang po ang sasabihin ko. Lahat ng panukalang batas, resolution, committee report na naipasa natin ay dahil sa tulong at pagpahintulot ng bawat isa sa atin. Hindi lamang ng author, ng sponsor, ng mayakda, kundi kabilang, higit pa. Ang mga walang pangalan at muka na walang pinamumunahang honorable ang mga pangalan, pero sa totoo lang, mas malaki ang papel na ginampala nila para maipasa ang mga panukalang batas, resolution, at committee report na ito. At 'yan ay ang Senate Secretariat, lahat ng empleado ng senado. Bigyan po natin sila ng pagkilala. Nitong nagdaang mga linggo, naging masalimot ang ating pinagdaan ng daan. At naniniwala ako na sa mga susunod na buwan at linggo, hindi magbabago 'yan at magpapatuloy pa rin 'yan. Subalit, ang paniniwala ko ay ito. Hindi tayo dapat tinitingnan depende sa kung sino ang binoto natin nung nagdaang eleksyon. That does not in any way define us, and that should not define us in any way. Bawat isang miyembro, buo ang aking tiwala na nasa isip at nasa puso niya ang mataas na interes ng ating bansa at maganda at maayos na kapakanan para sa ating mga kababayan. Kelan man, hindi ko pinagdudahan yon. At sana, kapagka tinitingnan natin ang bawat isa sa bulwagang ito, kapagka pinapahinga natin ang bawat isa sa mga salitang sinasambit sa bulwagang ito, kelan man, huwag nating isiping may iba siyang iniisip o motibo dahil bawat isa sa atin ay pantay at parehas lamang dito sa bulwagang ito, matagal man o bago. Bilang panghuling salita, malaking oras ang hiniling na ng bansa at ng bayan at ng ating mga kababayan mula sa mga miyembro ng senado ng ito sa nagdaang tatlong taon, sa nagdaang anim na taon, sa nagdaang labing dalawang taon para sa iba o higit pa. Maraming, maraming salamat sa inyong serbisyo. Thank you for your service. When I bid goodbye and bid farewell to the Senate in 2019 when I ran for governor, I said I will not say goodbye. I will not say goodbye to those who will not cross over to the 20th Congress unlike the impeachment. Instead, I will say, I will see you again. Hindi ako magpapaalam sa inyo, ang sasabihin ko, hanggang sa muli nating pagkikita. Do not be strangers. We are just here. May dalaman kayong folder o wala, andito pa rin kami. Mabigay mo namin 'yung nilalaman ng folder o hindi. Sana nahangiti pa rin kayo. And I look forward to working with you in government, in the Senate, and anywhere in the name and in the service of the Filipino people. Maraming salamat po sa inyo at sa ating lahat.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move that all pending matters under the calendar for ordinary business be sent to the archives. Sobob, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, I move that the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines on the part of the Senate be adjourned sine day.
Is there any objection? Share hears none. The motion is approved. By virtue of the authority vested in me, I hereby declare the third regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines on the part of the Senate adjourned sine day.